I've never done that, so. Alright, yeah, never done that, so I saw it there and I sort of had to take my opportunity. Well, thanks for everyone coming to the gavel passing ceremony where we welcoming the new council members and mayor. I'll get us started and we'll hand it over to Mayor Kavanaugh until conclude it. First, you can see here seated behind us are the new council members and mayor, and then we have the existing council members that were either re-elected or continuing up here, and then myself. And council member Cantino will be exiting during the ceremony, so we appreciate you all being here. Call the meeting to order, and as you can see, we had a lot of great visitors and friends that have come down to support the council and their friends, so thank you all for coming. I certainly wanted to point out a few, although about every other person here is either elected or dignitary or former mayor or elected here, but they certainly have Representative Kavanaugh here. Thanks for coming, I'll go through some names here and I apologize for not probably following the appropriate protocol and going in the right order. We've got President Putin Batilla here from our neighbor, the former Dahlia Laffey community. Thank you for being here, and he swore me in in my first term, so it was a special time. We have Mayor Blaine here and his wife from Scottsdale, thanks for coming out, my family. Some staff, lots of staff here tonight, thank you. We've got, I better go through here first, I don't know, Joyce here, Joyce Swiker from Congressman Swiker's office. I'm not sure if I saw Michelle Reagan, our state senator here, but she'll probably be here as well. State Representative Kavanaugh I mentioned, State Representative Michelle Ugente. We certainly know our Sheriff Joe Arpaio and his wife Ava are here, so welcome, thank you for coming. We have former mayors here, Sharon Morgan this year, former mayor John Capillo and his wife Joanna are here. Nice to see you guys, any other former mayors here? I know Jackie Miles just stepped out, she's here to, uh, maybe just keep. Former Mayor Miles could not be here, but Jackie is here tonight, thanks for coming, I was gonna skip Wally till the end, but Wally's here, and his lovely, lovely bride Sheila, thanks for coming out, great to see all you folks here. Any other former mayors here I missed? Very good, council, lots of council members. I saw a former, I mentioned Mayor Capillo from Joanna, it's great to see them. Mayor Morgan, gotcha, Mayor Morgan, did I say hi? I said hi, I bet he didn't mention it. Great to see you as well, I've met lots of council, former council members. I saw Ms. Wigachoff here, nice to see you. We saw Councilmember Ed Yates here. Boy, um, any other former council members? Oh, I'm gonna get to him, he's lower on my list, sorry. Higher and lower, you know what I mean. Yep, Karen Hutchinson is here, welcome. Yep, Rick Melendez, I'm gonna mention his wife now, he's gonna be here, he's here. And Rick Melendez, council member, former council member and honorary council from El Salvador, Rick Melendez. And we also have Frank Barrar from the East Frontal Chamber, thanks for coming out, Frank. We have Dr. C.T. Wright here from the Fondo School Board, thanks for coming out. Anyone else from the school board tonight? Oh yeah, Deputy Chief Jerry Sheridan is here. Fountain Hills Pride and Joy is from MCSO, thanks for being here. Let's see here, there are a lot of great folks here, and of course, many volunteers and supporters as well. I also have, um, John, yes, Captain Kleinice came from the other district, so thanks for coming out here. Of course, our captain Joe Rodriguez is here from MCSO, taking great care of District 7, our town out here. And formerly, we have honorary council Melendez here as well, where are you, Rick? There you are, good to see you. And we have honorary council from Poland, Councilor Horson and his wife. Thank you again for coming out to our council meeting. Do we have any other councilors here tonight? Well, thank you, there may be another one showing up. I saw some folks from the museum, I'm not sure Deb Skien, are you here? Didn't see Deb yet, Deb, welcome Deb Skien, she's the president of the Historical Society. And we have Judy Comper here, I saw her, she's director of our River of Time Museum. And all the other awesome people here, we are so fortunate to have you. I know Senator Pierce is here, and Judge Pierce Segul is here, and I think I mentioned all of our mayor. And I hope that any other elected folks are here, we just appreciate you being here for our reception. And, the who? King of Sting is here, yeah. Oh, yes, thank you, Sting, I thought you said Tim. Um, yeah, and he is on here, thank you. Bruce Hampton is here, the chairman of our Sanitaria District, thank you very much for coming. I know you have a job to do tonight as well, so. Um, so there we go. Alright, thank you everybody for coming, what a great supportive crowd here tonight. And we will move right along so you can get to the exciting 6:30 meeting, which I'm sure you all say for, right? Alright, now we will look for the newly elected folks to come forward for their ceremonial oath of office to be administered here before, so. Just one dry run just before you all got here, so I'm sure it'll go off flawlessly. We're gonna have Mayor Lex Kavanaugh, and then we'll have Councilmember Hampton, Brown, and Councilmember Lex Yates giving their oath, starting with Mayor Lex Kavanaugh by her husband and our state representative, John Kavanaugh.
Repeat after me, I-
I, Linda Kavanaugh-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona-
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of town mayor-
And that I will faithfully, that was too old. And impartially discharge the duties of the office of town mayor-
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God-
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Alright.
Alright, are you ready?
Sure, keep it brief.
I, Kathy Hansen-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona-
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
To defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
To defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of town council-
And that I will, see, I said sure. He hasn't taken directions well at all.
I have to start at the beginning.
And defend them against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge the duties of the office-
Discharge the duties of the office-
Of town council members-
Of town council members-
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And now we have Councilmember Lex Yates being administered the oath by Dr. C.T. Wright.
Yes, sir, thank you, doctor.
I-
I, C.T. Yates-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona-
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And I-
Defend them against all-
Defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office-
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of town council member-
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
So help me God-
So help me God, amen.
Alright, now we will hear the ceremonial oath administered by Councilmember Dennis Brown by Dr. Bobby Brewer, pastor of City of the Great Church.
Dennis, it's an honor, you will repeat after me please.
I-
I did it, Brown.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona-
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of town council member-
And I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge the-
Discharge the duties of town councilmen-
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Good job, I think it's official. Now I welcome all of the newly elected and continuing council members to take their places on the dais up here. At this point, I will officially pass over the gavel to Mayor Kavanaugh, who I have great confidence in, along with the help from a wonderful council and a spectacular staff and a community of great supporters, the gavel for you to pound at the start of each meeting.
I wish to thank all of you, family, friends, colleagues, staff, and residents for being with me today on this very special occasion. I would especially like to thank outgoing Mayor J. Slum for the help and support he's given me during this transition, and the staff for getting me prepared, not only for this ceremony, but for the next two years of service to the town. I would also like to thank my husband, John, for sticking with me through the elections, and now through the upcoming years of my service to the town. I know how demanding and stressful that could be because I did it for him the past- And I was gonna mention all the people that came here to be with me, but I think you went through everybody, so I won't do it again, thank you everybody. I appreciate the faith that the people of Fountain Hills have placed in me, and I promise to do my best to serve you well, thank you. And now, for Mayor J. T. Slum, I'm going to present him with this plaque, and it reads, "Presented to J. T. Slum in appreciation for four years of service as mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, May 2008 to May 2012." And now we have a special gift that the town gives to retiring members of the council. It's a gold fountain, and I'd like to present this to Mayor Slum. And also, we have this flag which has flown over town hall during his term as mayor, and I'd like to present this American flag to Mayor Slum.
Yeah, it says two to three minutes, see if I can get through twenty pages. Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. Exactly, there it is, John, thank goodness. First, let me thank the voters that elected me councilman as mayor and given me the honor to serve three terms on this town council, it's been an honor. I began my volunteer service to the town in 1999 as a commissioner on the planning and zoning. I was much younger. It's been thirteen years, my kids were two and six at that time, and now they're fifteen and nineteen. And in 2004, I was elected to town council, and then 2008 as mayor, Kavanaugh mentioned as mayor. What a ride, it's been terrific. Now coming in as mayor in 2008 also came along with the economy. And it was a great recession, the funds we had to operate the town with outside of public safety reduced fifty percent. So things were tough, decisions were difficult, including reductions of our valued staff from eighty-eight employees down to fifty-three. This was not an easy time to be mayor or council member or staff or citizen, struggling through the recession themselves. But it was an important time to serve. Council members, thanks for stepping up to serve all of Fountain Hills, through your hard work, respectful collaboration, careful planning, goal-setting, fiscal restraint, and empowering our talented staff and volunteers, you've done a very good job, and I thank you. To our staff and our volunteers, you do the heavy lifting, the day-in and day-out job to serve our residents, businesses, and organizations. With your hard work, the sharing of your talents, the focus on customer service transparency, and continuous improvement year after year, you've successfully fulfilled the council's objectives, kept our town beautiful, and done so under budget every year. We thank you very much. To the service clubs, the organizations, churches, other volunteers, and all of our town partners, I can't impress enough how important the work you do is in our community to hold up our health and the character of our town. One of the top values shared by Fountain Hill residents time and time again is the love of our small-town character in this beautiful community of ours. The care for one another you deliver and the events you organize and invite and bring us together is more important now than ever. So, thank you for your caring and service to others and keep up the great work, I thank you. To public safety, if you do not have a safe place to go home, nothing else really matters. Fountain Hills is a very safe place to live. We have been successfully served in areas of public safety for decades by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and Rome Metro. We're also served by many volunteers working alongside of professionals. Together, these wonderful people, selfless people, keep us safe, save our lives, and help us through traumatic experiences, and we thank you very much. The ongoing council, town manager, new town manager, staff, and new mayor. Through these very challenging times, we've maintained our savings, paid off debt, and even traded a rainy day fund while it was raining. You are now responsible for all this. The current town council has benefited from the wisdom and work of past councils, and we leave you with a beautiful town in strong financial condition. As the national economy improves, Fountain Hills is well-positioned for economic development and business vitality. Mayor Kavanaugh, I wish you and your council the best and support you one hundred percent. To my friends, I thank you for the never-ending support and friendship. I look forward to having more time to spend with you. And to my beautiful wife Denise and family, Mom, I see you out there, Carly, and Tim's playing basketball game, of course, so. Thank you for supporting me and encouraging me to step up and follow my dreams to serve a town that I've grown up in and that I love. The late-night meetings, the daytime meetings, breakfast meetings, lunch meetings, dinner meetings, ribbing cuttings, after this night will no longer occupy the family calendar. I still look forward to more times with each of you, and thank you for your enduring schedule. And thank you, and may God continue to bless the best community in the world, Fountain Hills, Arizona. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to call up Councilman Dennis Cantino to the podium. Dennis is leading the council, and we have this beautiful fountain to give to him. And I'd like you to say a few words.
It's been a real pleasure for the last four years to sit up on this dais. I thank my family, I thank God, so I've had the opportunity. I know in the last four years, the family's put up with a lot with all these lousy meetings. I, lousy meaning the extra meetings, not the coffee meetings, but I enjoy it. And the thing is, we're all doing a service for our community, and I felt like for the last four years, I did a service for the community. So many of my friends are here tonight, and it's hard for me to look them in the eye and say, "I won't be here anymore," but I'm going to be here, I'll be around town, you'll see me on that scooter, and I'm just gonna have a lot of fun. And I think that serving is a proud thing to do in this community. And I think for people that sit back and complain all the time, you ought to get out there and get your signatures and run yourself. And so with that, I will say, with Candy Cannon, you got a great town manager, and I think, and I know he'll do you a good job. He's trying, he steps into some big shoes to get some things done, but he will get the job done. And for the town manager-
Kathy-
Madam Mayor, and Beth, I have this one thing to say to the other ones. But they've been up here with me, and I appreciate everything they're doing, and I'm just real happy to have done what I did, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And now I'm gonna pass the mic to our newly elected council members, starting with Councilwoman Kathy Hansen.
Thank you, I think tonight, for the sake of time, will be real short because it doesn't take long to say thank you, a very heartfelt thank you. To the people who have supported me, to my family, to my husband that doesn't take directions, but really does support me, to the people that have served on the council, the mayor, Dennis, and to the people that ran for council, because it's no small undertaking. And it's a scary thing, and it takes a lot of guts to get up there and answer questions when you don't know what they're gonna ask you. So I appreciate everybody's efforts, I appreciate the citizens of our town because you are all what makes this the best place to be, so, thank you.
Councilwoman C.T. Yates-
I'll be quick too, same thing, my big thank you goes out to my lovely wife Nancy, my family Sophia and Mason. My wife, honest to goodness, was the one who really encouraged me, said, "Now's the time, you need to run." So thank you very much, and thank you so much for the support that I received. And I'm probably gonna say this probably for the next quarter, is how honored and privileged I am to really be up here. And thank you to the existing council and mayor because now that I'm on this side, and I was able to see what has been accomplished in the last four years, it's amazing what these people were able to do in such a terrible situation, and give us a strong foundation to move forward. So having said that, I'm ready to go, so let's get to work.
Councilmember Brown-
So I'll start by saying thank you to Judy Brown. Judy truly carried me through this. Trying to run a business and trying to run a campaign is not the most fun thing to do. And business is tough enough in this economy, and I was handful, I could tell you, but my wife carried me through it, thanks. And then I also see some friends out here that spat at me in my office and helped me and coached me and guided me through every debate and through every step of the campaign, thank you very much. And these are the citizens that supported me, thank you very much. Yes, it's a true honor to stand before the town of Fountain Hills and say, "Man, I'm gonna do it for four more years," thank you so much for the support.
Now I'd like to give the other council members a moment to say something, I'll start with council, you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. First Dennis, I wanted to thank you, of course, for serving our community, and best wishes to you and your family. And Jay, I didn't know you'd be behind me, so it's kinda hard, but I wanna thank you for representing the town of Fountain Hills with honor and integrity. You've guided, as we've all been saying, you've guided us through some challenging times, and you did it with sensitivity, because the changes that our decisions make changes to people's, to real people's lives. And you did that managing to make progress even while we had to pull back financially. And your leadership positions in the valley and the state also maybe is unseen, but gave a voice to our town. You always treated speakers and presenters and staff and citizens with respect, listening with empathy, and freely praising the accomplishments of others, and usually did it with some humor added in, as Wally heard earlier tonight. So, of course, we will miss you up here, we'll miss the fun and the camaraderie, but your family will be happy to get you back, I'm sure. Speaking of your mom and your dad, who I met long ago, of course, I'm sure that they couldn't be more proud of you. Sorry, I sound like a mom myself. You bring out the best in people, I'm grateful for your service.
Councilman Ken Elster-
First of all, I wanna thank councilmembers Hampton and Brown for your continued willingness to serve our community. I wanna welcome up Councilmember Yates and Mayor Kavanaugh, welcome. And I thank you for your willingness to serve the community, and appreciate the time that you will be putting into this job. I wanna thank Councilmember Cantino for his passionate and dedicated service to the town. There was never any doubt in the time that I've served with you in the past two years, where you stood on things. You spoke your mind- You spoke your mind, and you meant what you said. And I thank you for that, and I thank you for the advice and guidance you've given me. See if I can ask you to move back just a touch. Thank you. Jay, it's been a pleasure getting to know you these past two years. I wanna echo some of the comments made by councilmember Dicky. You have done nothing but encouraged me to serve the town, to pursue different ideas and thoughts. At no time have I ever had you question an idea that I had. You always listened openly and honestly, much like you treated our residents and those that came and spoke before the council. I wanna express my appreciation for your guidance in these past two years, and thank you wholeheartedly for all the service and dedication that you've given to this town. It's been an honor serving with you. Thank you.
And Councilman Henry L. Sells.
Thank you. Mayor Cavanaugh, I was about to say Mayor Lass. I've been saying that for several weeks now. At our last meeting, I kinda jumped the gun, and didn't think we'd have an opportunity to do this this evening. So I poured my heart out that evening, and going last here, I would have to second everything I've heard from our fellow councilmembers. It's been great working with our previous council. I look forward to working with our new council. Councilman Cantino, it's been an opportunity to get to know you better and to work with you, and as has been stated, you know, thank you for your service. We have known where you're coming from, and that's courage, and that's a trait that you've put out there, and that's appreciated. Mayor Plum, 13 years of service to the town of Fountain Hills. I'm planning and zoning as a council member, as a mayor. I've had the privilege and opportunity to serve with you as a council member and as a mayor for two terms. And as has been stated, you know, you've just served with dignity and integrity. And you've just polished that merit badge of honor in terms of being a mayor in the town of Fountain Hills. And we don't always agree, but as was stated earlier, your leadership skills and your temperament were just the right skills at the right time for the town of Fountain Hills. And it was an honor to serve with you, and I don't think we've seen the last of you with respect to public service or governance. Congratulations, and Denise and family, get 'em back for two more hours, at least. Good luck, Jay. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. We're gonna be starting our regular meeting in a few minutes. Of course, you can stay for that if you want, but I understand that if you would like to leave at this time, I'll give you like a couple minutes to get up and gracefully exit before we start our meeting. Thank you so much all for coming. Please come back again.
We're just waiting, because there are so many speakers, that Deb is just getting them in order. And we just have to wait for her to be ready, so we have to get the speakers for a few minutes. Dominique Mizada, you didn't indicate if you were for or against, you just said you did not want to speak. First on our agenda is our Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board. Call to order and roll call.
Tim Cavano?
Here.
Board Member Yates?
Yes.
Board Member Laje?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Elkie?
Yes.
Board Member Hampton?
Yes.
And call to the public, do we have anyone who would like to speak right now?
No ma'am.
No? Okay. Consideration of approving Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Meeting Minutes of May 3rd, 2012. Any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
Any discussion from council? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, same.
Mayor Siski? Open the public hearing. And, um, public hearing regarding Resolution EMCF-2012-DS-02. Call on, uh, ten, report.
Mayor Cavano, members of the council, um, this is for the adoption of the, um, tax levy. And the, for the District of Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District. Um, have any questions, uh, Finance Director Getty would be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding those.
Any questions from council?
I don't know about you.
Any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
Okay, then this closes the public hearing. Consideration of Resolution EMCF-2012-2 has just presented, and need a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion from council? Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Um, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Go move.
Second? And a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I will open the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board Special Session. And, um, we'll start with a roll call vote.
Tim Cavano?
Here.
Vice Chair Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Elkie?
Yes.
Board Member Hampton? Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Laje?
Yes.
Board Member Yates?
Present.
Call to the public, uh, any speaker cards, Beth?
No ma'am.
Consideration of approving the Cottonwood Ma- Maintenance District Board Meeting Minutes of May 3rd, 2012. Any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
And any council discussions? Call for the vote, all in favor? All opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Aye, same.
At this point?
I wasn't there.
At, at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding Resolution CMD 2012-DS-2, and I would like to call on ten.
Mayor Cavano, members of the council, it's the Resolution CMD 2012-DS-2, approving the estimates of expenses and assessments of the tentative budget as the final budget of the district for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending July thirty, or June 30th, 2013.
Any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
And that closes the public hearing. Consideration of Resolution CMD 2012-2, motion?
Go move.
Second. Council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I did it right. Alright, and this, now we will open the regular and special session. Start with the regular session. Uh, call the meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. That's Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For invitation, um, I'd like to call on Dr. C.C. Wright.
Lady Brown, here. With the words in my mouth and the meditations in my heart, be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, my strength and my redeemer. Our Father, I am delighted to offer a prayer before this august body during the inaugural meeting of the Honorable Mayor Lyndon Cavano and the Town Council of Fountain Hills. Let me thank Almighty God for giving the founders of this town the vision to construct a fountain, own a ranch, in the midst of a desert surrounded by rolling hills, and calling it Fountain Hills, our home sweet home. During this transitional period, it is appropriate for us to say a prayer of thanksgiving for the work of former Mayor Jay and his council, for a job well done. Now that the gavel has been passed, it is my sacred duty to offer a special prayer for the Honorable Mayor Cavano, her husband Honorable John Cavano, their family and friends, as well as the honorable Town Council members, for accepting their civic responsibility to promote the mission, goals, and objectives of the town government. Honorable Mayor and councilmen, it is my prayer that you will adopt some of the biblical principles of old, such as the willingness of Moses to serve. Here am I, Lord send me, the patience of Yeho, I will wait till my change shall come. The praises of David, the Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. The wisdom of Solomon, there's a time and place for everything. And above all, the love and mercy of Jesus Christ. Finally, it is my fervent prayer that the citizens of Fountain Hills will unite with this mayor, council, and staff in creating innovative policies and programs that will make our town the number one in the nation. Yes, let us unite, let us come together, let us stand together, let us walk together, and let us pray together for God's amazing grace. Amazing grace, how sweet this sound that say the red flag means, for it is God's grace that has brought Fountain Hills but for, and that will lead this beautiful town into the future. May God bless our mayor, may God bless Fountain Hills, may God bless Arizona, and may God bless the United States of America, this is my prayer, amen.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Deb, can we have a roll call?
Mayor Cavano?
Yes.
House Member Yates?
Yes.
House Member Laje?
Yes.
House Member Brown? House Member Hampton?
Yes.
House Member Elkie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Yes.
At this time, we have the rotation of Vice Mayor positions. Um, as everyone knows, that the Vice Mayor position, a Vice Mayor serves for an eight-month term. First, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor, uh, Dickey for serving as our Vice Mayor, and, and then the, uh, position now rotates to Councilman Henry Laje. This is something planned, you know? I was hiding it.
Is there a song or a dance, or?
You can work on that. And, um, we have no scheduled appearances or presentations? Are you still doing that, sorry? It's getting messy. Yeah. Okay, call to the public, any speaker cards, Beth?
Yes, Mayor, we have two, and Ricky Melendez followed by James Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor Cavano, Vice Mayor Laje, council members and staff. I'm here tonight, uh, speaking as a former council member and a resident, and I want to make sure that those comments are recorded as such. I came here, Mayor Cavano, to congratulate you, to applaud you for volunteering to serve our great community. Also, Mr. Yates, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you yet, but, uh, my congratulations also for with you. Sitting behind, uh, me earlier, Mayor Cavano, was your husband, State Representative John Cavano, an individual that I had the privilege of serving with in the council for many years. Mr. Cavano could, no, let me change that, should be our representative in the United States Congress. I really feel we need a change. When we opened this meeting, uh, I wanted to make a couple of comments, and I checked with, uh, Town Attorney Andrew McGuire. Council members, the first meeting I attended, I started executive session, and Deb Bendick can watch for this, at four thirty in the afternoon, and I got home at three o'clock in the morning. My wife said, where, dad, uh, then have you been? And I was very fortunate that at that time, we had, uh, a gentleman, sergeant by the name of Matt Martinay, a marshal who drove me home, and he said, Mrs. Melendez, you've been in the council chambers for all this time. So I wish, uh, Mayor, that you don't have those types of meetings. You know, uh, I served with, uh, three mayors and five town, uh, managers, and, uh, there were, uh, three issues that I'd like to address because I think it's appropriate, because it deals with budget. If I may, Mayor, uh, the first one was that we had a major issue, and all of these are budget-related, uh, with regard to law enforcement. We had to make a decision, it was primarily from budget standpoint, we couldn't afford to, uh, law enforcement agencies, to either have our own police department or contract with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. We elected to go with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, did we do the right thing? I believe so, because the sheriff has served us well, and the deputies that we have had here have been top of the notch. The second was the fire district. I believe a week after I took over as a council member, the fire district, the week before it had been disbanded, and we were looking at the possibility of not having fire protection. And thanks to people like Chief Scott Abreca and, uh, other members of the council and mayor, uh, we stepped up to the plate, and, uh, we developed a system, a continuation with rural metro that exists today. The third and final thing that I have to talk about is the budget. Now, all of us, I believe, as, uh, responsible council members and mayors, have three things that we have to, as far as I'm concerned, on top of our minds. Law enforcement protection for our citizens, fire protection, and a balanced budget. And, uh, at that time, Moody's, if I recall, had given us a negative rating, and Julie Getty, uh, bless her, helped us, uh, from being, uh, at loss and losing the credit spending that we had. We had sixteen losses, which we settled, uh, I believe. Unfortunately, we had a recall of a mayor, and as you all know, I oppose any type of recalls. And, uh, we, at the end of the day, came together and made the decisions. So, um, Mayor Cavano and council members, I ask that you come together and use the word that hasn't been used in a long time in today's society, and everybody knows what I'm talking about, a seven-letter word that has respect. I wish you the best of luck, Mayor, Council Member Yates, and the rest of you, God bless you, and keep our town whole.
Thank you, James Ashley.
Thank you very much, my name is James Ashley, I am the Deputy Chief of Staff for U.S. Congressman Ben Quill. Congressman Quill regrets that he couldn't be here tonight, they're voting in Washington today, and this is a really important day for Congressman Quill's Judiciary Committee, Attorney General Eric Holder appeared, and it was a good opportunity, and a very important opportunity, to hold him accountable for the fast and serious debacle, and to question him today. But that's not why I'm here, Congressman Quill, I want to make sure I was able to come today to congratulate you, Mayor Cavano, congratulate the new members of the council, but also to thank the existing and outgoing members of the council, outgoing mayor, along as well, for your service, your service to this community, but not only to this community, to neighboring communities, and therefore to the valley and to the state. It's something really important, and, and we thank you for your service, and your ongoing service in this new chapter as well. My first introduction to Fountain Hills was actually twenty-one years ago, when my family visited for Thanksgiving from back east, and we had a rental on gun site. Remember that really well, it was a good Thanksgiving, and a good weekend, and a, a burnt turkey, but we were still okay with it. I also, um, want to acknowledge the privilege that I had just a couple of weeks ago to attend the dedication ceremony for the honorary council for the nation of Poland. That was a very important event for the United States and for the country of Poland as well, and that actually gives Fountain Hills a great distinction of being home to three honorary councils for our U.S. State Department, and that is a great distinction, and something that we're really proud of. That was a, a great night for Fountain Hills, and this is another one, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Ashley, since it's done, my thank you is to Congressman Quill. Any other speaker?
No ma'am, that's it.
Alright, uh, at this time, we're going through the consent agenda, and I will read. Six, six consent agenda, we'll start off with, uh, approving the town council meeting minutes from April 30th, 2012, and May 8th, 17th, and twenty, twenty-two, 2012. Two, consideration of authorizing payments to the Maricopa County Elections Department for direct support of the May 15th, 2012, general election in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seventy-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Number three, consideration of Resolution 2012-DS-15, abandoning whatever rights, title, or interest the town has in certain portions of the ten-foot public facility and drainage easement located at 16422 North Skyridge Lane. Number four, consideration of Resolution 2012-17, relating to accepting a non-matching grant with Maricopa County Emergency Management Department, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for fire fuels reduction. Number five, consideration of approving the cancellation of the town of Fountain Hills July council meetings, July 5th, 10th, and 19th, 2012. Consideration of appointing council members Kathy Hansen, Kate Elkie, and Cincel Yates to a town council subcommittee for the purpose of interviewing, strategic training, advisory, commission, applicant. Is it a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
Any council discussion? Roll call. Roll call, um...
House Member Dickey?
Aye.
House Member Elkie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Laje?
Aye.
House Member Hampton?
Aye.
House Member Yates?
Aye.
House Member Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Cavano.
Aye. Here's Seven Zero. Hopefully, we're canceling all these meetings, I just started. All right, now we'll go to the regular agenda items, and this was originally on the consent agenda, and it was moved to the regular agenda. It's consideration of moving the Keith McMahon Monument plaque, presently located on the median of Avenue of the Fountains, and moving it to the Keith McMahon Memorial at the L. Allen Crickshank River of Time Museum. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, I had a request from some citizens to, for the town's consideration to possibly move, uh, former council member McMahon's monument plaque from the median, the avenue, because it's obscured by the, uh, the, uh, bench that's in front of it, that be moved over to the Keith, uh, McMahon Memorial at the, uh, uh, L. Allen Crickshank River of Time Museum. Um, I've hence talked with a, a number of other people interested, uh, um, parties in this. I, I haven't found a lot of support for moving it, um, other than maybe trying to consider moving the bench so that we could, it wouldn't be so consi- con- so what I'd like to do is maybe, uh, look at that possibility first before we look at any other, uh, consideration so that, uh, the monument plaque could be more, uh, visible. Um, you know, I think we all know that, that former council member named, that he was, the Avenue of the Fountains was his, basically, his home. He loved it, and that's why it's there. Um, ob- obviously, we have not only that, but the monument with the, at the museum, and we also have a, a street named after him, but, um, in, in honor of his hard work for the community over the years. Um, so I like to maybe think, um, I couldn't talk to everybody individually because we have open meeting hours, I had to put it in front of council for this. But what I think I'd like to do is maybe consider looking at alternatives of, of moving the bench to another location so it would have better exposure at this time, and see if that would be, uh, appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Um, so for the purpose of discussions, can we get a motion? Or, I'm sorry, I'm choosing it instead.
I'm sorry, I was thinking I was gonna move to table. I don't know if that means you can discuss it or not. If I do, panel?
We can only discuss the motion to table.
We can only discuss the motion to table.
Okay. Well, I move, I would like to move to table this item until we have the, the full information, um, and maybe add to what Ken said that since we're gonna be maybe doing some work on the median, we might wanna table it. Can we do it indefinitely, or do I have to actually put a meeting date on there?
Uh, it can just be on the table and pulled off when appropriate.
Okay, then I'd like to please move to table this item until a, a more appropriate time and we have more information.
And do I have a second on that?
Second.
And, do we have anybody who wants to speak on that?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. And any other discussion on the tabling, or? No? Okay, then roll call vote.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elsie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rej?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right, next item is consideration of resolution two thousand twelve, there's two, amending the town of Fountain Hills Financial Policy Section Three to comply with Government Accounting Standards Board, T A S B, number fifty-four, and amending and restating the town of Fountain Hills Financial Policy. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I like to, uh, refer to finance, uh, Deputy Town, um, Manager, Finance Director Getty to, uh, discuss the GAZB fifty-four fund balance reporting governmental fund type definitions.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this agenda item is to amend the town's financial policy, specifically the fund balance portion, which is a result of a standard issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, commonly referred to as GAZB, and the standard is GAZB fifty-four. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board is currently the source of generally accepted accounting principles used by state and local governments in the United States of America. The mission of GAZB is to establish and improve standards of state and local governmental accounting and financial reporting that will result in useful information for users of financial reports and guide and educate the public, including issuers, auditors, and users of those financial reports. The town's financial auditor, Dennis Osa, a partner with Kristen Larson Allen, is here with us this evening to present a summary of the requirements of GAZB fifty-four and answering questions from the council. If I can introduce Mr. Osa.
All right, thanks, Julie. Thanks, uh, mayor and council. What a way to start, right? You gotta get a, a accounting lesson right off the bat. Uh, what I wanna do is I just wanna just go over some of the basics on GAZB fifty-four. GAZB fifty-four was actually implemented through the last fiscal year. Uh, what you have in front of you is a resolution to adopt a new fund balance policy. And I'm gonna go through, uh, GAZB fifty-four so you understand why it's important that you do adopt this new policy. Uh, basically, what I wanna do today is go through so you have an understanding of, of what some of the new fund balance categories are as compared to what they, how they were previously reported, um, understand the requirements on how that fund balances have to be reported, and then just be aware of, of why it is necessary or, or why it's important that you do adopt a policy related to, um, GAZB fifty-four. So what GAZB fifty-four did, prior to, uh, the implementation of GAZB fifty-four, the focus of fund balance was really on reserved and unreserved, and so basically what it told the users was, is it told the users what monies had been set aside specifically for specific purposes, and, and the rest was basically unassigned fund balances. So the priority was really not so much on looking at what the spending priorities were, but it was more on, uh, what is available to be spent. Um, what GAZB fifty-four did is, is it really, uh, focused on who sets the spending priorities, and that's what we'll talk about, is those categories, and you'll see what I'm talking about when we talk about who sets those priorities. And it really opens up more transparency within your fund balances that you're carrying over from year to year so that the users of the financial statements have a better understanding of, of what's sitting there and what's available to be used for the future. Um, as I mentioned, this was effective for the previous fiscal year, so the financial statements had already been restated, um, to reflect GAZB fifty-four. This is in effect just to adopting a policy, and I'll, I'll explain why that's important on the financial statement. Um, one thing to note is that it does only apply to external reporting, so the internal financial statements that you may receive on a monthly basis generally won't reflect, uh, necessarily what you might see external reporting. Uh, just as an example, under GAZB fifty-four, certain funds, and I'm not gonna go into it, but certain funds have to be combined, um, or rolled up into the general fund based on the purpose of the fund balance. Uh, you may see those for internal purposes as individual funds, and it's appropriate that you see them as individual funds because it is necess- important information for you to have. But from an external financial reporting purposes, that's where the fund balance policy comes into place, where you can commit assigned fund balances. Uh, so the categories of fund balance, um, really, if I made the category, firstly, that you're non-spendable. These are fund balances that really aren't available to be spent. Uh, these are fund balances such as, uh, things that are set aside for prepaid, for long-term receivables, um, or a permanent fund if you have one. Uh, the ones that we're really gonna concentrate on today are the restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances. The restricted fund balances, these are basically fund balances that are restricted by an outside party, so a third party. So this might relate to, if there's some type of restriction related to bond covenants, um, or if there's restrictions related to grants. Um, these are items that are restricted by a third party as far as how they can be used in the future. Our committed fund balances, these are fund balances that are committed by you as, as council. Um, so these would come through as an ordinance. Uh, so these are, just as an example, if you pass an ordinance for sales tax to be used for a capital purpose, those would be committed fund balances. So those would be fund balances that are committed by council, um, and the only way to spend them for any other purpose is for council, through formal action, to uncommit those fund balances. Our assigned fund balance are fund balances that can be assigned by council or by, uh, an individual appointed by council to assign fund balances. Uh, and this is part of the reason why the fund balance policy becomes important, uh, is because without having that policy in place, you don't have an individual with the authority to actual, actually assign fund balances. So you'll see in the resolution that you have in front of you that this fund balance policy now appoints an individual who has that authority to assign fund balances. Um, and then finally, your unassigned fund balance, this is basically everything else, um, that doesn't fall into the category of non-spendable, restricted, committed, or assigned. Um, some of the key things here, as I mentioned, the committed fund balances, these are taken by action by the board, by the council. Uh, it does have to be, action has to be done by the end of the fiscal year or prior to the end of the fiscal year. So any funds that need to be committed, uh, generally, you're not going to, to commit a bunch of funds at the end of the year. Generally, it's done throughout the year through ordinances. Uh, but they would have to be done before the end of the year in order for them to be reported as committed fund balances. You don't need to commit a dollar amount. You just need to commit a purpose, and that dollar amount can be determined at a later time. Assigned fund balances can be done anytime before the issuance of a financial statement, so that determination does not need to be made prior to the end of the fiscal year, um, just prior to the issuance of the audit report. Uh, assigned fund balances cannot, uh, report a negative fund balance, uh, or, uh, assignment of a fund balance cannot create a negative unassigned. So as I mentioned, unassigned is pretty much everything else that doesn't fall into the assigned or committed or restricted category. Um, but you can't assign fund balances to the point where you're creating a negative unassigned fund balance. Um, and finally, uh, it's probably the most important point, which had the most effect on the financial statements, is the unassigned category. In the past, uh, what you're used to seeing is unreserved. Um, that is, has gone away, and unassigned fund balance can now only be reported in the general fund. So your special revenue, your capital projects, and your debt service funds are gonna report either committed, restricted, or assigned fund balances. The only time you'd report an unassigned fund balance in a fund other than the general fund would be if you had a negative fund balance. Um, this is just, uh, just some information on, uh, presentation of fund balance. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over this. Basically, what it's saying is that, um, these fund balances can be reported um, on the face of the financial statements in those five categories in summary, or it can actually be detailed out. Um, if you report it in summary, then there needs to be a note disclosure describing exactly what those individual commitments and assignments are for. Uh, this is important, uh, because this really goes back to the, uh, policy that, that you have in front of you today, um, because it talks about the note disclosures, and without a policy, it's really difficult to obviously disclose in the notes to the financial statements, the purpose, and who has authority to commit and assign fund balances. So in the notes, we need to disclose who has the authority to commit fund balances, and who has the authority to uncommit those, and obviously, uh, we need to disclose that they need to be committed prior to the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so the policy that you have in front of you is going to define that, as well as assigned fund balances. Um, the notes to the financial statements should disclose who has that authority to assign fund balances, and so that's included in the policy as well. Um, and then also in the notes to the financial statements, you should report what the spending priority is. Uh, generally, you're gonna follow, um, GAZB has a default, and, and the default is basically that you spend restricted, committed, assigned, and then assigned, unassigned fund balances. Um, basically, going from the most restricted to unrestricted amounts of monies to spend. Um, that's the general spending priority, um, and that's what's laid out in your, um, in the policy that you have as well, is that priority. So just really quickly, I'm just gonna run through this real quickly, um, touch on the funds, uh, the governmental funds that are affected. The general fund, really didn't have a significant effect on the general fund. Uh, the way that you see the general fund being reported is how it's always going to be, or i- is how it's continuing to be reported, with the exception of including these individual fund balance categories. So you'll see those included in the general fund. Uh, in addition to that, again, for external reporting, you'll see that there are certain funds that do get rolled into the general fund for external reporting, because when I talk about special revenue funds, um, certain funds that you may have no longer fit the definition of a special revenue fund. Uh, basically, according to the, the new fund balance, um, requirement through GAZB, in order to, a fund to, to be, uh, considered a special revenue fund, there's certain criteria that you have to meet. The first one of which is that you have to have one or more revenue sources, and it has to be a significant revenue source to that fund. Um, and if you don't have a significant revenue source, if the fund is, um, funded primarily through transfers, um, that would not be considered a special revenue fund, and those would be the type of funds that get rolled into the general fund. Um, also, you can't report assigned fund balances in special revenue funds. Uh, special revenue funds can only be restricted or committed. So if you have a special revenue fund that doesn't have a restriction or a council commitment, um, then that would generally roll into the general fund because you wouldn't have a restriction or a commitment. Uh, as I mentioned, the revenue sources, they have to be substantial. Um, and, and I think the, uh, the GAZB really put this piece in here um, because a lot of governments out there have reported significant special revenue funds that now with the new GAZB, no longer meet that criteria. They were probably in the gray area to begin with. Um, but now, uh, with that substantial in there, there's actually a substantial revenue source in order to qualify. Uh, it doesn't mean that you can't transfer monies into there, um, but it does mean that, um, the majority of what's going into that fund is coming from a revenue source and not from a transfer. So even if you were making two thousand dollars of revenue, but if you were transferring twenty thousand in there every year, that would not qualify. Uh, and then finally, um, and this is applicable to the town since you do have a rainy day fund. Rainy day funds could qualify for a special revenue fund. Uh, for the town of Fountain Hills, the rainy day fund will still be rolled into the general fund. Um, it will be reported as a committed fund balance, um, because that was committed by the council. Um, however, the, uh, the policy that the, that the town of Fountain Hills has related to the rainy day fund is that there's a certain amount of money, uh, unspent money each year that would get transferred into the rainy day fund if those funds were available. Um, so again, it doesn't have a specific revenue source. It's coming from basically excess unspent fund balances, and so they're transferred, so they wouldn't qualify as a special revenue fund. But it doesn't mean that, um, you wouldn't report the rainy day fund as being a committed fund balance. Um, finally, uh, I'm gonna skip that, we already talked about restricted and committed. The, uh, debt service fund, as well as the capital project funds, um, they can report restricted, committed, or assigned fund balances. So you really won't see any significant changes for the debt service and capital project funds. Um, real quickly, the, the rainy day, uh, stabilization fund. Um, I, I read through the policy and compared it to, um, you know, the GAZB requirements. Um, you know, in my opinion, it does meet the GAZB requirements as far as stipulations in there, as far as how the rainy day funds are formed, as well as specifically how those funds and when those funds should be spent. Um, so I think, in, in my opinion, the policy that you have in front of you, um, is, is, uh, adequate for defining as a rainy day fund and committing those fund balances in the general fund. This is a little, uh, to-do list. Um, this is just something I had put together, uh, prior to the implementation of GAZB fifty-four, um, but I think it's, it's applicable here as far as looking at the policy that you have in front of you, and basically, it's kind of a checklist as far as what needs to be done in order to adopt this policy, and, um, each one of these items has been met as far as, you know, what's the authority for establishing the rainy day funds, um, requirements for adding to the rainy day funds, the conditions that need to be met to spend the rainy day funds, uh, and then the balance of the, the stabilization, um, how it's reported on the face of the financial statement. Each one of those are addressed in that policy that you have in front of you. Um, again, uh, defining, uh, committed fund balances, which is included in that policy as well as assignment, and who has the authority to assign those fund balances. Uh, this is more of a checklist, um, that, uh, that Julie would probably look at and that we would look at in doing the audit here, evaluating what might be reported as restricted, looking at the ordinance to determine what fund balances would need to be committed, um, evaluate funds for classification changes. This is where we rolled some of those funds into the general fund, which we had done in the previous year, um, as well as merging some of those funds. Um, other things to consider going forward, um, our general fund budgeting considerations. Um, if you, you know, determine that maybe you wanna roll some of these funds in for internal purposes, it may have a budget consideration. Um, make sure we've got the documentation for restrictions as well as commitments, um, and then develop an implementation plan and, and organize a team, but we've got that taken care of already. So at this point, I'd be more than happy to, uh, answer any questions. I didn't see any eyes blazing over, so...
Any questions, Mr. Quell?
Thank you, Mayor. Got that, Julie? Um, I, I just had a question about enforcement. Now, GAZB's not an enforcement agency, so the auditor, like our next year's audit, will be looking to see that we conform with this. Is that how that works?
Yeah, um, no, the, the enforcement of it, no, GAZB doesn't enforce it. Our job as auditors is to make sure that the financial statements are reported in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which would include, um, the new GAZB requirement, and so we would be looking at that, and so when I had mentioned making sure we've got documentation for the restricted fund balances that are reported, as well as committed and assigned, uh, we'll be asking Julie for that information.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. You, you, you talk about a substantial revenue source. What is substantial? Where, where is the breaking line between substantial and losses?
Yeah, they left that one a little bit vague, um, for upper interpretation, I guess. Uh, you know, I, it, it is gonna be up for interpretation, and it really depends on each organization. Um, you know, you, you may not have significant revenue compared to the general fund, um, but for whatever reason, you may consider it to be a significant revenue source. reason, you may consider it to be a significant revenue source. You know, that's something that, you know, Julie and I have talked about it as, you know, we implemented GAZB fifty-four, and we gave our opinion on what we consider to be a substantial revenue source. You know, one of the things that we consider is how it's being funded. And so, we look at, is it largely being funded by transfers, or is it revenues that are largely funding that fund? And if we look at it, and it's equal between transfers and revenues, or, I'm sorry, if it's equal between transfers and revenues, or transfers outweigh the revenues, then I would definitely say it's not substantial. So there's a couple ways that you can look at it. Is it substantial to the town as a whole, or is it substantial to the individual fund? So you can look at it both ways, and I think you could argue either point.
And this question's for Julie, if I may. What will change? What are we going to see in the budgets or in the financial statements?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the only difference you'll see will be in the annual financial report, the actual audit that you get. The fund balances may be categorized or classified as different, but it doesn't do anything with the amount of money or any, you know, money going from reserve to somewhere else. The amount of money will stay the same, they'll just be called different things, and you'll see that only at the end of the year on the financial statement.
Thank you.
Julie, so I think what I'm hearing you say is we're pretty well positioned for a smooth transition. We're not looking at something that's significantly labor intensive.
Mayor Kavanaugh, vice mayor, with that, no.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I'll ask for a motion.
Oh, second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Elke.
Hi.
Councilmember Hampton.
Hi.
Councilmember Yeats.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lajay.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
Councilmember Dickey.
Hi.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Mayor Seven Zero.
All right, Mr. Uh, Ken, do you have any, anything that?
Mayor Kavanaugh.
All right. Then we'll go to the summary, GAZB ten, summary report.
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I may have trouble.
All right, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And roll call.
Councilmember Yeats.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lajay.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
Councilmember Dickey.
Hi.
Councilmember Hampton.
Hi.
Councilmember Elke.
Hi.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Mayor Seven Zero.
Thank you. There's a mess for you. Went to sleep for a minute. All right, I'm gonna open the special section, part of the, and I'll call that order, and we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Councilmember Yeats.
Hi.
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hampton.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Yes.
Councilmember Dickey.
Yes.
Okay, and now I will open the public, public time, regarding resolution two thousand twelve eleven, and Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, tonight, we're here to, for public hearing purposes on item one, approving the estimates of extensive assessments, tentative budget as the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twelve thirteen for the town Fountain Hills. I'd like to give you a presentation for discussion, and then I think you would open it for a public comment from that, and then the two business items after that would be considerations for further discussion with that. You, I would recommend that you can or should ask questions as we go along with the slides. We'd be happy, the staff is here to answer any questions regarding any particular item and area for that. But the general discussions would be for item two, considerations for the resolution for the actual adoption, but this is the public hearing section, portion of that. So I'd like to start, first, I'd like to say I want to apologize for the, I gave you a packet last Thursday with a number of errors in it. So that's my fault, I'm the one that put that together. My fingerprints are all over that, so if you see any issues with that, please look my direction for that. Thanks for the staff that worked with me from Monday on to get those corrections squared away. I'd like to talk a little bit, we, there was a, in May, a month ago, there was the adoption of the tentative budget, and that's thirty-one million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. The statute doesn't allow a final budget to go over the adopted tentative budget, so we're gonna talk about either that number, or we're gonna talk a lower number. Subsequent to that, we have some reductions that we want the council to consider. There was a reduction in our law enforcement for the fiscal year of a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Also, there is no need for the ADWR, Department of Water Resources fee, that the state legislature abolished this past session. And there's a reduction in the Highway User Revenue Fund, which is our gas tax money that we receive from the state as part of our urban revenue sharing program, of ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. So there's a total reduction of two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We also, in the last budget work session we had, Mr. Mood did discuss about a three-hundred thousand dollar design for Sularal that we want to consider in the future for the next fiscal year and put it in the capital funds, so we added that three hundred thousand back in. And we also reduced some of the grants funds in the special revenue area of two hundred and thirteen. So right now, the total proposed expenditures for a final budget consideration is less than the tentative budget, thirty-one million, four hundred and nine thousand and thirty-five Again, tonight, I'm sorry, Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions, the reduction of the grants, could you please explain what that is? And then the reduction in the HIRF, that's a reduction in expenditures due to less coming in, and I wondered if the other items that actually did, got us to the good, were thought of by Ms. Mood to try to make up for that HIRF loss.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Dickey, the first question is on the grant, what we did when we made, had those adjustments that we had to make, you know, they weren't, we didn't reduce the law enforcement contract, it came in less than what we had projected. So we took the actual number compared to what we had estimated it to be, and it was lower. So what we ended up with is available resources of thirty-one point four million, so we had to adjust the miscellaneous grant allocation we appropriated, about one point five million each year, just in case we get grants in, but there's no money really attached to it. So we just reduced it to balance it to the available resources. So that's why it's two hundred and thirteen thousand an odd number. And I'm sorry, what was the other question about the?
Looking at the fact that we don't, I guess that none of this is like real money, but the DWR fee, thirty grand, and then the law enforcement, which was unexpectedly less, did Paul consider keeping the HIRF budget, the road budget, the same of the ninety-eight thousand, even given that the HIRF money didn't come in?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Dickey, when we did the tentative budget, we had information from the lead that the HIRF could be reduced, so the tentative budget included a hundred and ten thousand dollar contingency in the street section, so that's been reduced down to twelve thousand dollars now.
Okay, thank you. So just to get the actual word, wait.
No.
Mayor, sorry, thanks. Can I ask anyone else?
I don't know that we can do anything about this, but the presentation is quite comprehensive, and there's a lot of information in it, and as long as we've, you've offered to let us ask questions as we go along. I see that community partnerships is quite far down the presentation, and I just know that we have a lot of people that are here to speak on that, and I didn't know if there'd be any way that we could possibly jump forward in the presentation and allow any discussion on that.
I can certainly, um.
If the council, if that's all right with everybody, but I just, it's just a little kind of different circumstances tonight.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Hampton, I can certainly skip ahead. The next, in the next section, again, this is just the outline of what the presentation's going to be, and then the organizational charts, as you can see, were what we have today, forty-five full, part-time, nineteen, for the sixty-four total employees that we have. Of that, because of the part-time, is fifty-six point six for that. And those, these are the organizational charts for the departments, administration, development services, that has all the positions in there that show which positions are full-time, part-time, which percentages they have, with community services, and then the municipal court. So with that, we have thirty, three million, three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, personnel and benefits. And if that's, again, that's the sixty-four employees, we had some savings in fifteen, fifteen percent health savings, and I am still recommending a two point five percent cost of living increase for staff, and it is a method budget, that's the number that's requested, and the personnel cost total are still two percent less than last year for that. So, and the debt is what we all know as eleven point four million with the two bonds that we have outstanding. One for the museum, library, and the McDowell Preserve, that's till two thousand and twenty with the bonds, and then the last one is the three years that we have left on the community center. Then we get to the budget overview, as you just heard from the accountant, there are the twenty-one sets of books that we have to require, that we're required to maintain with staff, and discussing all of those, I think you've seen these before. Well, those sources of funds are still thirty-one point four million that we're still looking at, and as you can see, those, it's all the same except the adjustments for the thirty-one point four million that we had in there. So I can get through those and go to the department overview, and this is where we're at today, for those. Part of administration, we have the community partnerships within that. Again, within administration, there's eleven point six eight, full-time equivalent employees. Those are the various divisions, we can always come back to them, should you like, should you want to do that, for the various divisions, to talk about that. We can come back and take that out of order, based on some economic development approaches that I'd like to talk with you about, from that standpoint as well, and we, now we can talk about the community partnerships, which is part of the administration. Those are the areas that we have with tourism, community theater, Boys and Girls Club, Food Bank, Maricopa County, SO Puffy, the senior services, and the Jump Start Biz contract that we have for an incubator. So be happy to start with this if you'd like, we can start with, whichever one you want to start with, any one of those. If you want to take those out of order, Mayor Kavanaugh, that's your prerogative.
Well, since it seems like a lot of people are here to talk about theater, we can start Mayor, we have twenty-three speaker cards. We did receive eighty cards that indicated they did not want to speak, seventy-eight, eight of them showed support for the theater, one showed support for the Boys and Girls Club and the theater, one supported all but the temper of commerce. We have three cards, they did not wish to speak, and they are against funding the theater. So with that, we have Val Stasis, Stephanie McDonald, and Peter Hill. I'll read three names at a time, and then repeat them as you come up. So it's Val Stasis, Stephanie McDonald, and then Peter Hill. All right, let me just remind everybody that we have this little light system here, and it goes to yellow to warn you that your three minutes are almost up, and then it goes to red. And there's so many people that want to speak, so we ask everybody, just courtesy, so we can get everybody in at a piece an hour. Just keep your, keep your eye on this for the red. I disabled the buzzer. There used to be this kind of buzzer that buzzed people, and I just didn't like it, so I'm just asking you to keep an eye on the.
With my vision, you may have to go, "Grrr."
Okay.
I'll remind you gently if you go over.
Mayor, council, my name is Val Stasis, and I live at one one zero one five, North Inter Avenue.
Hit your address, either. Let's take Fountain Hills.
Ah, that's new. Okay.
Got that?
Over the past twenty-six years, the Fountain Hills Theater has enjoyed a healthy partnership with the town of Fountain Hills, even before we were a town. The value of performing arts and education has always been appreciated and supported. We've always had a friendly, open-door relationship with every council, and we've never taken for granted the funding provided by our town. That said, I understand that there are many questions regarding the theater, and I, along with other longtime theater staff and friends, will try to present facts. I provided a packet to each of the council members and copies for the community and the press at the back of the room. I will present the facts regarding the building that we now occupy. The old library, which is our youth theater, is thirty-one years old. We've been there for sixteen years, and our old community, and the old community center is over forty years old. We have used it as our main stage for ten years. The buildings were given to the Civic Association, formerly Fountain Hills Community Association, by Pratt Properties on April sixteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, with very specific restrictions regarding their use and purpose. On December thirteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, for ten dollars, the title was transferred to the community association. On March sixteenth, nineteen ninety, the Civic Association, formerly the Community Association, for the cost of ten dollars, signed the title over to the town. All restrictions were still in place. The deed states that when the town is incorporated, then the property must be transferred to the town, and the town shall hold title to the property, but only so long as the property is operated as a community center and solely for the cultural and civic purposes which benefit the residents of Fountain Hills. If property is used at any time for something other than a community center and solely for cultural and civic purposes which benefit the residents of Fountain Hills, then Pratt Properties or its successors, or any person or entity establishing itself as a real party in interest, and owning property in Fountain Hills, may enforce the provisions. If you see Exhibit A in your packet, that has all the complete details of all the document numbers and everything that pertains to the building, and copies of the documents themselves. Mayor Kavanaugh stated in the Times that the Arizona Republic, that she believes the town being unable to rent or sell these buildings is a significant loss of revenue to the town. If the deed allowed for the sale of the property, what would be the value? Well, in a nutshell, the county has very little information on these old buildings, but a search shows that the property's estimated value is five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-one. The commercial building next door, La Guerre, tried for at least five years to sell with no success. It has now gone back to the bank at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you see Exhibit B, and see those other property values and what is now on the county records. I want to close this by saying thank you very much to the sixty-plus letters that came in, and I would like to also present three hundred and fifty, sixty, whatever number, there was a petition on Facebook, and I would like to present this and the comments to the council. Thank you very much, and congratulations to the two of you.
Thank you. Stephanie McDonald, Peter Hill, and then Ross Collins.
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmembers, and Stephanie McDonald. As Val stated, the buildings are very old. Fountain Hills Theater, with the help of the Virginia Piper Terrible Trust, Boeing Corporation, Fort McDowell, and many strong supporters, and a lot of fundraising, spent one hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars on baseholder improvement. As to that, the value of the volunteer construction people and the donation of materials, and that figure was double. We needed many upgrades, upgrades, most required by law, and many retired by age of the buildings in safety. We have added sprinkler systems, fire doors, new electrical, air conditioning, and all ADA standards have to be met, such as restrooms, ramps, and accessibility. Mayor Kavanaugh has stated in some articles that the contact with the theater includes major maintenance and repair, and that the county has an insurance policy on the building. He goes on to state that there is money involved in the daily upkeep in the form of repairs. We can't argue with her there, because the theater does pay for most of it. Fountain Hills fiscal year repair and maintenance exceeded eleven thousand dollars for last year, including plumbing, air conditioning, tax and maintenance, pest control, janitorial, electricity, et cetera. The town spent a total of two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. If we were not in the building, it would all be the sole responsibility of the town, and I need to add here that the improvements and maintenance figures don't include any expenses directly related to our staff, which would be sound and lighting systems, office computers, et cetera. You can see in your packet, Exhibit C, E, M, S, with our mess. Regarding our entrance coverage, even a town-owned vacant, vacant building would have to be insured. The theater covers the liability and personal property, two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars last year alone. Town and ports still that the town paid five hundred and thirty-eight dollars for coverage on both buildings. He, he did a bit due for that. We have always worked hand in hand with other organizations to serve the public and make Fountain Hills diverse and desirable. The Sunset Quan has helped build many of our early sets, and greatly assisted in our move into our new home in nineteen ninety-six. We don't want to be putted against other groups in town because we're all valuable. We don't want to be putted against other groups in town because we're all valuable. However, to single out the theater is questionable. We are blessed to have a home, but other groups have also gotten their homes through the generosity and the taxpayer dollars. A bond built the library and the museum. All the town-owned buildings are itemized with their annual rent and maintenance costs in Exhibits D and S. Although the town doesn't own the Boys and Girls Club, the facility was given to them for use by the school justice at one dollar per year. And they too did a lot of leaseholder improvements, but they did get their homes. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Peter Hill, Ross Collins, and Noel Irret.
This is Mayor, Councilpeople. It's been brought up by the council that Fountain Hills Theater has operated in the past without town funding and can simply do so again. The fact is that the town of Fountain Hills has always recognized the importance and balance that the arts brings to a community and regularly supported the theater and assisted in our continued development since nineteen ninety-two. It's in great part through that commitment that the theater has grown to become the wonderful, statewide-recognized amenity that it is today. The funding has always been proportionate to our budget size and if you refer to Exhibit Eight in your packet, you'll see that it's averaged a very reasonable sixteen percent over the years. In fiscal year oh seven oh eight, the somewhat unpredictable annual support was put into a three-year contract for services. That is, the theater would provide youth programs, education camps, and additional, and an additional annual show in the park, all of which would be far more expensive or simply nonexistent through the Parks and Rec program. It should be noted that the theater, uh, to provide the annual show in the park increased our expenses by twenty-five thousand dollars per year. However, that three-year service contract made it possible, for the first time in the theater's history, to create a budget with some funding certainty. The theater's always been remarkably responsible regarding the fiscal aspects of running an arts organization and our financial records and audited review staffs are matter of public record and are always available. Our most current balance sheet and consolidated reports are included there as Exhibit I. As with all arts organizations, we're reliant on personal and corporate donations as well as grants and our own extensive in-house fundraising. It is a fact that many corporate and public grants actually require proof that the local government supports and appreciates the arts in the community before they will even consider granting any funds at all, so you see how this could have a domino effect. You can easily see on Exhibit J, our annual report, the percentage of the makeup ticket sales and donations as well as the expenditure charts. If you refer to Exhibit K, you'll see the side-by-side, the contracts for services to compare where the contract monies are going and I might add being well-spent. And finally, there's some discussion about the profitability of the theater. While we're proud to have been one of, if not the most, fiscally responsible theater in the valley, it should be noted that we are a not-for-profit organization. What happens without this funding? Certainly, services would be curtailed. Will the theater still be here without this funding? Perhaps, but let me remind you that in the last four years in the valley, we have lost Tempe Little Theater, the Stagebrush Theater in Scottsdale, the Old Gomfman Theater of the West Valley, Stray Cap Theater, the Broadway Palms Dinner Theater, and just this week, the Arizona Jewish Theater. Let's not our, let's not let our theater become another arts casualty. Thank you.
When you, when you tell us the street, we don't want you to give your actual street address, but just mention what town you're from. So that's, that's all.
Okay.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Town Council, my name is Ross Collins from Phoenix, Arizona. Um, for the last ten years, I've been blessed to be the artistic technical director of the Fountain Hills Youth Theater here. And, uh, I'm happy to speak to you about the non-artistic value of our theater. Uh, firstly though, I'd like to clarify a misconception that we're a charity organization, as Peter mentioned. We, uh, this is just not true, we are a nonprofit organization that carries out a private, a public-private partnership and our contract is with the town of Fountain Hills. See, our job is to render artistic services to the public that would otherwise be too cost prohibitive for our Parks and Rec Department to offer independently. And through this service, we help to enrich the community by offering low-priced, live entertainment in the form of theatrical productions and through our partnership with Jazz in the Hills and the Chamber Players. We offer safe activities and secure meeting places for youth after school and during summer break through our workshop program. And we offer many opportunities for students and young people who have court ordered requirements to obtain community service hours. Now, as far as economic development goes, our theater has been a visitor's destination for over twenty-six years. Statistically, fifty percent of our audience, forty percent of our students, seventy-five percent of our performers, and ten percent of our volunteers all come from outside of Fountain Hills and use our restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, and other support services. Our actors are often involved in rehearsals that run from four to six weeks, five to seven days a week, and during that time they'll come to rehearsals, rehearsals directly from worker school and more often than not, they'll get dinner, fill up the car, or stop for coffee here in town on the way to rehearsal. Fountain Hills Theater creates, also creates jobs with seven W-2 filing staff members, twenty-eight ten ninety-nine subcontractors, and many other support persons that earn six hundred dollars a, um, year or less. Our main stage and youth theaters have garnered numerous Arizona awards for theatrical excellence and this year, your youth theater was joined, has joined the National Youth Theater Association to compete on a national level. Anyway, sorry. Anyway, internationally, our twenty-fifth anniversary twenty-five hour show tune marathon was webcast and received positive hits from as far away as Great Britain and Europe. And if you look at the, uh, the Exhibit L in your packet, you'll see how many websites we've hit just last month alone. That was over two hundred thousand web hits on our website alone. We at Fountain Hills Theater take our public-private partnership commitment to this wonderful town very seriously. We do everything we can to help our town meet its goals and increase its economic vitality. Thanks to our superior quality programs for over twenty-six years now, Fountain Hills Theater has proven, proven itself to be a community amenity, not only for residents and their children, but for new and returning, returning visitors as well. Uh, cutting the town's support would mean a serious diminishment in the services that we can afford to offer our community. Uh, again, I thank you for your time, my name is Ross Collins, I want to thank you for letting me come up here and talk, this is really great. And, uh, I invite you all to come out and play. Thank you very much.
Noel Irret, Randy Beards, and then Peter Bardot.
Hi, Mayor, uh, council members, I'm Noel Irret. I currently live in Fountain Hills and, uh, I have to shave my legs for this. I have been listening and looking at letters and such, and one thing I've noticed, many people are comparing the service contracts for the Boys and Girls Clubs, the Food Bank, and the theater to the needs for road improvements. I'd be the last one to say that we don't need these improvements. I drive on Solar Boulevard every day. But has anyone noticed that if all the funding for the theater for the last eight years that everyone keeps talking around had been withheld in its entity and assuming it was not spent on something else, the entire amount, amount is less than five percent of what the road repairs are estimated to cost. And I don't think the town will save fourteen million dollars cutting one small amenity at a time. The theater in particular seems to have been singled out as the primary target and yet it appears that if we look at the maintenance costs of the other city-owned buildings, the maintenance of the statues, the fountains, and other buildings, uh, well, the theater's expense to the town is very small. I also cannot understand how anyone can find it reasonable to pick and choose which arts or amenities should be asked. If you are philosophically opposed to government support of the arts, why are we only talking about the theater and these other service contracts? Why are we not ready to touch the maintenance and insurance on the statues? The running of the fountain, the library, the museum. Not one of these things could or should be touched. But it begins to make us all look a little bit hypocritical when we target just a few organizations and amenities under the guise of, it's not the government's role. Let me urge this council not to trade the heart and soul of this town for brick and pavement. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Randy Beards. You know, I know everybody's feeling enthusiastic, but if you clap, I can't hear the names and we just usually don't clap, rather. I know you're excited and, yeah, just, I can't hear what she's saying if you clap, so let's just keep going, okay? And I, and I didn't get his name, Randy Beards, and then Peter Bardot and Linda Bardot. Okay, Mayor, go ahead.
Mayor, council members. My name is Randy Beards, I live in Fountain Hills. Just to let you know a little bit of all my background, I lived in a small community in Indiana, little farm community, that had very limited opportunities available to the local children. There was football, baseball, basketball, and after graduation, there was college, only if your family could afford it. There was working in an automotive factory and there was going into the service. I chose to serve my country with the United States Air Force so I could experience more than just rows of corn. I was eighteen the first time I set foot out of Indiana. When I chose Fountain Hills as a place to raise my daughter back in nineteen eighty-five, I chose it because it had the honest values that I was raised with back in Indiana. In nineteen eighty-five, the theater had the only accessible programs available for children. Funding in part was provided by the town and I am very grateful for that funding. My daughter was involved with the theater when her mother decided to move out of state. Without the love and friendship that Michelle developed at the theater, she would have been lost. Friends like Paul Norden and his family, the Russo sisters, and each and every teacher that she had at her, in her theater classes. It gave her a place to grow without fear. Michelle has raced a theater soapbox derby car and she went to New York City. She went there one year before the towers fell. The theater helped her get those experiences, ones that have given her confidence and strength. I'm fifty-seven years old and I still haven't been to New York City. Let alone experienced racing down Tallahassee in a soapbox derby car. The theater did give this old farm boy some experiences I would like to, I would never have had. Experiences like appreciation for the arts, the understanding of the dedication of one group should have towards the whole community. I have seen live plays I have met, would have never have seen if our town was like the little farm community I came from. I have even fulfilled an item on my bucket list that I would never have filled in Indiana. The theater experience gave me the confidence to perform a solo in front of twenty-five thousand people at one of the Fourth of July events that the theater entertained throughout all the years. My daughter and I have marched in the Thanksgiving parade on, and together and we have performed on stage together. How often can a parent actively work with her child as an equal? Giving the child an understanding that dad is just as scared as she is just before the curtain comes up? And the look we gave each other the moment the standing ovation. She is now twenty-seven years old and has moved back to Fountain Hills with her three-year-old son. She moved back here because the values she developed here are the same values that she wants to develop in her son. Those values in a great part were formed in a small stage in McDowell Mountain School where the theater first started. She saw loving adults helping children learn simple things like hard work, doing what you said you would do, and loyalty to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Peter Bardot, Linda Bardot, Nancy O'Dowsky.
Madam Mayor, Town Council Members, um, I did not shave my legs to come tonight. Take my wife, I feel relieved about that, actually. Um, I'm actually here to express my support for the arts and the theater. Um, I actually got my start in the performing arts in third grade and played a desk sergeant in a murder mystery. And, uh, that was, uh, that was a great experience. And I was born and raised in New York, I remember Broadway plays, my parents took me to the Met, um, to the Philharmonic, to the ballet, which, uh, still kind of lukewarm though. Um, so I, I hope I can be somewhat eloquent tonight, but it's a moment I'll try to settle for coherent here. Um, so I, I really want to praise all of the dedicated and hardworking and really passionate people that we have here in support of the theater. These guys work really hard, they, um, they dedicate a large portion of their time and their families and their resources to keeping this theater going. And I just, I think I have a little bit different perspective than a lot of people that are going to speak here tonight. Um, I think some time ago, you know, with all of the, talk about the, the building facilities and how it's been deeded to this person and the theater can use it and all that, that's really not what I want to discuss. I, I'm more interested in discussing the cash subsidies to fund the losses that the theater takes. See, I think some time ago, we started giving the theater cash money to, you know, fund the difference between what they're taking in and what the plays cost. And I think all of these amazing people that are so dedicated and work so hard to keep the theater going and doing such a great job. I think that safety net in cash subsidy, instead of being a positive umbilical, I think it ends up being a boat anchor, keeping the theater down. I think these people, if they put their energy into raising money and raising awareness and marketing what the theater really can do for this town and has done for this town and will do for this town, I, I think the fundraising would be enormous. I mean, you've got a petition online, three hundred and sixty-some odd people, you've got letters, you've got emails. Uh, there's huge support for this theater. It's, it's amazing, it's a great thing and it should be supported and I think the donations would come. In fact, if you were to take away that funding and vote on that and that were to come to pass, this hundred dollars would be the first part of that donation. I pledge that and I would donate this hundred dollars whenever the, the theater needed it. And I think a lot of people around here would do that and I think the people watching at home would do that and I think everybody in this room would do that because the theater is important to this town. And I think it's important to this town, I just don't think it should be taken away from the taxpayers by forcing through our taxes. I think we should be given the opportunity to donate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Linda Bardot, Nancy O'Dowsky, Jerry Levon.
Hi, good evening, council members, uh, my name is Linda Bardot, hello to everyone who's new. Um, I just want to be really brief and echo some of what my husband said. I had been raised around the theater as well, I spent summers doing summer stuff in the Berkshires. My mother was a producer of the Orange Town Players, the tonic rough with, at the town of Rockaway South East. So I had the opportunity to be involved behind the scenes, I'm not much of a singer or actor, but I get to sing and do things like that. Um, the highlight of my young granddaughter's life was taking her to see Cinderella this past couple of years ago. She got to sit front row center in her little Cinderella outfit and she still drives by the theater and calls it Cinderella's House. She loves it. So I'm in favor of this theater and I would have to echo what Peter said, I was really happy to hear that Val had three hundred and fifty names that she got from an online person. If every one of those people gave a hundred dollars, like for willing to do as well, that's half of the seventy-two thousand that the theater is needing. Um, much in front of that, maybe some of the marketing and sales could be tweaked a little bit. Um, I was looking at the seating capacity and what they were charging and all of that and if there's that many thousands of people that are really coming, maybe we can do something to enhance the marketing. So this theater is bringing in money, I understand it's a nonprofit, but we're not talking about profit for profit, we're talking about making more than you're spending on the production so that you have more money to get better costumes and, you know, draw the actors and maybe do more production. So I would like to voice my opinion that maybe we shouldn't be subsidizing them from taxpayer dollars, but yet they should sign up or start a foundation or an endowment for the theater and I think the money would come flooding in. Um, I think the fact that the gentleman brought up about getting grants that the government looks to see if they're being supported by the town, I think the fact that we're giving them the buildings already shows a large commitment from the town and that we're willing to pay their maintenance and so forth. I don't want to take up all three minutes, um, so there's lots of other people, but thank you for listening and, uh, welcome, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Linda. Nancy O'Dowsky, Jerry Levon, and Rich Kapowski.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I am Nancy O'Dowsky, a Fountain Hills resident. Um, the theater is a wonderful organization and an important part of the development of our youth and the enjoyment for all members of our community who want to participate. I appreciate all of the hard work and the creativity and the time that all of the members, um, involved in the theater participate and work with. But according to Arizona state legislature laws, the town is responsible for roads, safety, sewer, water. Um, the theater doesn't fall in any of those categories. Our town finances are very lean, we've been cutting every place that we possibly can cut, but there's still some other places. I'm not in favor of giving I'm not in favor of giving funds to the theater. And if I was the one that was making the vote, I'd be saying that they had to pay rent for the building, and we should give more to the maintenance. And I do understand that they are buying and paying and doing extras. But this is their organization, and they're the ones that need to support it, not the taxpayers. So you'd be glad I'm not one of the people that are making that vote, because that's the way I'd go. So I ask you to consider withdrawing at least the funding for the theater. Thank you for your time.
Jerry Lavov, Rich Ratauski, Joyce Leglia.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Council, welcome. So nice to have you here, and I'm so honored to speak in front of all of you here, and congratulations, Linda. I came here tonight to speak about the issue of the community theater. The community theater is an awesome cultural, educational, and American venue that undoubtedly brings people and business traffic into Fountain Hills. According to the theater spokesperson, from toddlers to seniors, there are thousands of citizens who benefit from the gift of white theater within our town borders, and men's Fountain Hills families donate hundreds to thousands of dollars and hundreds to thousands of hours of their volunteer time. That being said, for nearly twenty-six years, the theater has been enjoying an enormous partnership and support from the town in terms of paid rental benefits, as well as subsidized building maintenance, repairs, and insurance. Besides the rental, maintenance, and insurance benefits, the theater has also been receiving an additional sum of about seventy thousand plus dollars per year in cash. In the last eight years alone, the figure amounted to nearly seven hundred thousand in taxpayer dollars. Twenty-six years ago, the theater was just a baby, and as any baby in its growing stages, it needed a lot of support, which it received courtesy of Fountain Hills Government. The theater is now a twenty-six-year-old, healthy, prosperous, and revenue-generating adult, with thousands of admirers, cash donors, and a great reputation, not only within our community, but also outside of Fountain Hills. Friends of the theater, including myself, and all of us who are here tonight, will never abandon our child, no matter how old it gets. Our private sector loyalty to our theater will always be unquestionable and indisputable. But there's a big distinction between our private sector support and loyalty and your taxpayers' dollars. There are many people in this room who also have businesses and nonprofits, who they consider to be their babies too. Who pays for these babies when they're born? Who helps all these people raise their children? No one. They only have themselves and their own hard-working, private-sector dollars to rely on. The theater that was once a baby is now a twenty-six-year-old adult. Let's start weaning it off the government's life support. It's no longer a child or even a teenager. There are other town priorities to attend to. Look at our roads. Our twenty-six-year-old is no longer a child. He's all grown up now, and should now be allowed to walk and live life on his own. And I also want to second Peter Bordeaux, should the financing not pass, I'm going to play five hundred dollars of my own money towards the theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Rich Ratauski, Joyce Leglia, and Carly, no, Leslie Van Valkenburg.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. I understand that the community theater is a positive thing for many people in Fountain Hills. It is, however, a private organization. It's been receiving substantial financial support with public money, as we have heard. Over the past eight years, the theater has received over six hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the town of Fountain Hills. In addition, we've heard about the theater operating in buildings owned by the town. Building maintenance and repairs have been provided. The rent paid to this town has been the major sum of only one dollar per year. I think it is accurate to say that this is a great deal for the theater. It is a great deal for a private organization with public money. If the theater is entitled with such treatment and support, then what prevents other private entities from requesting, even demanding, and rightfully expecting a similar great deal? There are other organizations which provide entertainment, cultural, and other benefits to the residents of Fountain Hills, and be considered just as worthy of support. This could include Little League Baseball, youth soccer teams, other organizations. It is the town's obligation under state law to provide and maintain streets, sewers, and public safety, but such public support of a private theater organization is not a legal obligation of the town. We've had difficulty in finding adequate funds to provide needed road maintenance and infrastructure. In this context, the financial support of a private organization, regardless of its worth and benefit to some residents, needs to be critically examined. The theater can be considered a nice-to-have, but can we afford to so generously fund all the nice-to-haves if we can't afford the must-haves? As a private organization, I think the theater cannot expect taxpayer generosity. As with other worthy private organizations, reliance should be on private sponsors, a healthy business model, those must be the strategy for success. I think the issue is a matter of principle and the proper use of public funds. Thank you.
Joyce Leglia.
I come to you as a former business owner, a citizen, and a mother. My daughter in second grade started out in the theater, and she read at a second-grade level. By the time she was in her second grade, and the testing, I know it's not the A's test then, but whatever testing they get, she'd get a sixth-grade level. And I do attribute this to the theater. Even though she had one line that went, "Ah!" She loved to be there every night and read along with the script, every line with every other kid. And just the reading and going over and over the scripts increased her reading ability that much. The A's class this year, over seventy-five percent of the girls, unless they're boys, who are in the A.R. class are involved in the theater. I do not think that is a coincidence. I think that the reading has helped them. The going along, the read is also the technical, is also the volunteering they do. They come, they make their own sets, they make their own costumes, they volunteer to try to do fundraisers to make extra money. As a former business owner, I come to you to say, "I actually hooked up with the theater. I bought theater tickets and would offer free theater tickets to be dinner in theater when we had first bought El Chapo. This worked out very well for us. We made a lot of money, and it did a lot of good for the theater." But I hooked onto them. They helped my business. They helped bring other people from the other side over the hill, which was a big thing back then, because people in Fountain Hills were, mm-mm, ugly. But to get them over the hill was a major, major task fifteen, twenty years ago. I also would like to say that the theater has helped us with, in two thousand nine, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. My daughter, that involves with the technical end of the, um, sorry, the technical end of the theater, and it's been my whole life. And I'm sorry, I'm right. But it was her second home, and they really helped her push through and made her feel like everything was the beauty, and I am clean and free now. And I just thank you for listening to me, and I'm sorry. I tried, I tried.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Leslie Van Valkenburg, Carly Van Valkenburg, and then Pam. I'm sorry, I'm going to assassinate her last name. Azula? Hey. Thank you.
Mayor, and everyone else. I will address this issue of supporting Fountain Hills Theater from two distinct perspectives, as a parent and as a taxpayer. First, from the perspective of a parent. My child has been active at the Fountain Hills Youth Theater for the past six years. Because of Fountain Hills Youth Theater, she has had the opportunity to develop her self-confidence and her self-discipline. Her communication skills and teamwork skills are strong now. Her horizons have been broadened through new experiences. The sense of achievement from learning a new role or a new song, or from the run of a wonderful play, has been unequal. Participation at Fountain Hills Youth Theater has allowed her to meet new friends, grow in confidence, and learn skills that will last a lifetime. Fountain Hills Youth Theater provides a safe place where she can explore issues, take risks, and test her emotional and physical boundaries. So you can see that for all these reasons, why I'm committed to support the Fountain Hills Youth Theater. But since this is an issue about money and not about how my child became self-actualized, let's look at it from the perspective of a taxpayer. The National Education Association reviewed four separate longitudinal studies, three from the U.S. Department of Education, which focused on the potential effects of arts engagement, and found that youths who have access to the arts demonstrate higher academic outcomes, better workforce opportunities, higher career goals, and are more physically engaged. Youth who are involved in the arts typically earn higher GPAs and perform better on standardized tests. When a student performs better, the school and our community benefit. In addition, students involved in the theater take part in more extracurricular activities, as well as more academic honors programs. Arts involvement tends to increase their college enrollment and college completion, and a person with a college degree makes more and pays more in taxes than a person without a college degree. Youth who have exposure to theater experience, it's better workplace, excuse me, theaters who have exposure to theater experience better workplace opportunities because they demonstrate more effective communication skills, are proven team players, and are more disciplined. There is a marked difference between the career aspirations of youth with and youth without theater opportunities. In addition, youth involved in the theater report higher career goals. On average, Fountain Hills Community Theater provides opportunities for a hundred and twenty-five youths per season, and that is five shows with an average cast and tech crew of twenty-five per show. In addition, specialty classes, work groups can serve an additional hundred and fifty per session. Oh, shoot. Supporting Fountain Hills youth is a short- and long-term investment in our youngest citizens. Short-term, the youth benefits from higher grades, an enriched childhood experience, and greater civic involvement. Long-term, a more educated and productive taxpayer means more taxes and a willing workforce to strengthen our community. Can you just wrap that up? Amen.
Carly Van Valkenburg, Pam Azula, and Sandy McGee.
Hello, my name is Carly Van Valkenburg. I'm from Fountain Hills, Arizona. First off, I think that the theater is very beneficial to both youth and adults. I came here about six years ago, and I have been passing more than fourteen plays. If this theater never existed, I would never be a straight A student, nor enjoy life as much as I do now. This theater's helped me get over my shyness and has opened new doors that I've never thought possible. If I didn't, sorry, if I didn't have this theater, what would I do with my extra time? If I didn't have this theater, I wouldn't be who I am today. Please continue supporting the theater. The youth and the town need it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Carly. That's Pam. Followed by Sandy McGee and then Karen Smith.
You were actually very close. Thank you.
My name is Pam Hunter Agaloo, and I am something of an anomaly. I am actually native of Arizona. I grew up in Phoenix, and I do remember the crazy people out here that built this fountain and the community and wondered, "Who in the world would want to live here?" I ended up marrying somebody moving up to the northwest, and I have been on many, many boards, so many boards, that I sometimes felt like I had splinters. As a former board member of many 501(c)(3)'s, not least with Junior League of Seattle, Seattle Symphony League, and Habitat for Humanity, it is a commonplace problem, finding funding. And as anyone who's involved with either a nonprofit, a for-profit, whatever, our economy's bad, we all know that. We don't have to beat that one too terribly. Grant courses are drying up. What might have been a grant that a nonprofit could have last year won't be there this year. A lot of these businesses, these nonprofits, are having to hire grant writers. That comes at a very steep cost. Somebody mentioned here that it's simply a matter of marketing and public relations and all of that. I did that for twenty years. I owned an advertising agency. I know what this is all about. It is not that simple. I would come down here and visit my folks from Washington State after I moved up there, and it just seemed like I would hit when one of the productions would be at the theater. I was amazed, having access to Seattle, which is quite the arts community, coming down here, watching these plays, these actors, these people who are so dedicated to their craft. And they certainly don't make a lot of money doing what they do. They do it for the love of the art. The children who are involved in the children's theater have these mentors, these people who set goals for themselves, know how to budget. There are people who are well-read, well-versed. These are people that we need to support in our community. The arts are what make difficult times like these palatable. We, if you look at some of the business journals, movie theaters are doing okay. People still need to escape. They still need to have something that they can go out and enjoy. To not support this theater is barbaric, to be honest with you. These are people who make our lives better. I live on a fixed income. I'm disabled, but I still will support that theater in whatever way I can, and I hope that you too will choose to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Everybody's saying to stay where they're from, just because I said don't give your address. Could you say just Fountain Hills or whatever town you're from, please, and come up with your name and your town?
Sandy McGee, Karen Smith, and Amy Burnett.
Mayor and Council Members, I am Penny McGee. I live in Fountain Hills. I moved to Fountain Hills in nineteen seventy-eight and started this theater as a children's theater in nineteen eighty-six. I strongly feel that this theater is vital to the cultural well-being of our community. The council in this community has always supported our theater in all aspects and the other artistic endeavors. Our award-winning theater has provided live entertainment for twenty-six years, enriching the lives of both the youth and the adults. My now-brown children participated in this theater, and they have become professional contributing adults because of the confidence and poise that they gained in their theater experience. Many, many, many other children have done the same. Ticket sales only cover a third of the expenses of the theater, and despite exhaustive and aggressive marketing and fundraising, our donations are down fifty percent. I implore the town to please continue providing your support of the theater and its artistic culture that attracts many people to our wonderful town, including those people that moved here, lessening the impact of our now-declining census, and lessening the impact to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks, Smith. Karen Smith, Amy Burnett, Pastor Chris Russo.
Hi, my name's Karen Smith. I'm from Scottsdale, one of the ones that come over the hill. I could tell you incredibly wonderful things about the theater. I've been coming here for nine years. But what I want to tell you is what I do when I drop my kids off at the theater. I drop them off, and then I come spend my money here. I go out to eat here. I get my hair cut here. I shop here. I go to the Goodwill here. It's a wonderful place, and I wouldn't be here working out for the theater. And I want you to consider that when you consider what you want for Fountain Hills, and that it's something that brings people to your town to spend money. Thank you.
Amy Burnett, Pastor Russo, and Karen Hudson. Amy, last, you're up. Pastor Russo.
Good evening. Congratulations, Linda. And Council, thank you for allowing me to- Good evening. Congratulations, Lena and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Patrick Russo, and I'm the owner of Russo Salon and Spa here in Fountain Hills. Uh, as a business owner, I would just like to say that I actually have had quite a few people, uh, that have gone to the theater from out of town, that come in from Mesa. I've gotten two people from Mesa and people from, uh, Scottsdale that have come in to see the theater, saw an ad there, and then came to me to get their hair done. So that, as a business owner, is really important to me. Also, I know of two clients that, uh, had friends in the show here. They were living in Scottsdale, and one was in Phoenix, came in to see the show and had never been to Fountain Hills, loved Fountain Hills, and ended up moving here. So, um, that's, that's one major thing. It does bring people in. The other thing is, we really just, I want to focus on children. Um, you know, Gary said that now this theater is twenty-six years old, and it's an adult, and it's time to treat it like an adult. Well, it is an adult, but guess who comes to that adult are children. Children to learn from those adults and that adult. So they want to grow, and they do grow. It's really important. I'm, I just can't tell you how much we need the funding for the theater to help the theater continue its success. And also, I'm in favor of giving funding to the Boys and Girls Club. I'm all about children. I, I will help them any way I can, and please don't, don't cut this funding. Thank you.
Sharon Hutchinson, Lena Belliner, Dennis Reed.
May I, I'm a council. I'm Sharon Hutchinson from Fountain Hills. And I'm here tonight to talk as not only a resident, but a former council, former council member.
Yes, put your mic down.
Okay.
Got it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do you want me to say that again, or am I okay?
I'm here as a resident and also as a former council member. So I can appreciate your looking at the budget, and I can also appreciate the responsibility, the challenges, and the opportunities that you have to face. And I know with the current economic situation, things are not the way they always used to be, and some of the challenges become greater. I'm not here to debate the good or bad of the theater. I think the theater serves a purpose, and I think we can be proud of it, and most of us do support it. I am here to speak about the use and funding of public money for private enterprises. I think the town has in the past done a wonderful job of doing that. Part-time leave was great. But just like people at home and other organizations have to cut back when the funding isn't there, I think that we probably need to evaluate carefully and see what we're getting for our dollars. And as I say, I think the theater does a wonderful job. But I think the town does a wonderful job in enabling the theater by giving them the building at very reasonable rent. And I think that we have to be careful with any organization, that we don't cross the line between enablement and entitlement. And I think the theater has a lot of supporters, and that they can probably do some more grants, some more funding. And I would encourage you to look carefully at this and recognize the enabling that we have done over the years. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks. Lena Belliner, Dennis Reed, and the last card is Kelly Ryan.
I don't see Lena anymore. I'm at the left.
Dennis Reed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Dennis Reed, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this night on this, uh, very sensitive topic. I think, uh, all of us can agree that, uh, the theater is a wonderful thing. There's no doubt about that. I feel like there's been a lot of emotional, um, argument here tonight, and I don't see where that fits in to the town budget. I don't think it's right to, uh, have taxpayer money pay for private enterprise. If the theater, uh, is to exist, it should be self-supporting. And so I am opposed to any, um, public money being funded to the theater. There's no reason why the theater should be singled out over and above any other club. There's, uh, a lot of, you know, uh, art takes on many different forms. Why is it the performing arts here what we're talking about tonight? Where's the funding for the martial arts? Where's the funding for the bowling alley? Where's the funding for other after-school activities? You know, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Twenty-six, twenty-seven years, I don't know how long. It's time to cut the, uh, the strings, I think. If the, uh, theater needed some help when it was getting started initially, it has had that help. The starting time is past. The theater either needs to stand on its own or, uh, find other sources of revenue besides the taxpayers, most of which don't use it. It looks, it appears to me that, uh, the deck is kind of stacked here tonight with people busting from out of town to talk about an issue that affects, please, that affects the people here in Fountain Hills. If you just singled out the people in Fountain Hills and, you know, that would be probably where you should be getting your input from. If they want a theater in Scottsdale, fine, they should go have one there. Why, why are they here tonight? This is the Fountain Hills issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, please, everybody has a right to speak. Everybody who has spoken pro-theater, everyone else has been very quiet. So let's all respect each other, and everybody will get a right to speak.
Hi, my name is Kelly Ryan, um, living in Fountain Hills. And I got to tell you, I'm terrified right here, right now. I'm, my heart is racing. My heart is racing, my hands are shaking, my, my voice is shaking. I don't want to stand up and talk in front of people. Is something?
Just talk to me then.
I am.
Sitting there talking.
I'm getting there. Uh, I didn't write anything down because I didn't know what I wanted to say, and to memorize something would be way out of my realm. But I'm up here talking because my children can do that. My children can memorize seventy-five pages of dialogue and then stand up in front of people and talk about, and, and, and perform it. My children have gained so much from this theater that goes so far beyond. And I'm sorry if this is emotional, as opposed to money and numbers. But this is an emotional moment, and money and numbers come down to saying you're putting a price on the raising of our children in this town. And there's not a lot for our children to do in this town that doesn't cost us. I don't have a lot of money. I don't have enough to a hundred dollars to give this theater or five hundred dollars to give this theater to pledge. I donate my time. I donate my children. And I do believe that that's all I can do, and I do do that. This is very emotional because this children has been here, this theater has been here for my children from the day we moved here. My children are involved in theater, and they did not want to move here, which means they're in Florida, land of amusement parks and beaches. They did not want to live here amongst golf courses and old people, according to them. And this theater has been used, and this theater gave them friends and needed and family, and they were there for each other. And it taught them dedication. It taught them how to commit. It taught them how to accept disappointment when they didn't get the role they wanted, but still give it a hundred percent. All life lessons, and while we spoke to them, you know, very, very well. What I have seen my children grow into people I couldn't raise. I could go on and on about the, my daughter who's graduated in A and T after three years with a double major and a certificate. Um, I can talk about my daughter who just graduated this high school with honor, who was accepted into Walter Cronkite School of Journalism. This not, would not have happened with just me as their parent. I mean, this would not, I would like to take credit and all the glory from my children and their accomplishments, but I cannot. I have to credit Mr. Collins. I have to credit Ian Tolliver. I have to credit every single person that I've dealt with in the theater that has been there for my children. And to see my children go through the hard times they have within our family and losing friends, and my daughter's boyfriend who passed away last summer, who couldn't get out of bed and quit crying, got up every night and went to rehearsal. She may have came home, but she knew this theater depended on her to put on that show. There was no backup quarterback. There was no second team to walk in and take her place. She went there every night, and she came home and fell down. She was so devastated by the death of this boy. But this theater has been there in every way, and it's taught my children so many things that they will take throughout life with them. And to say that it's adult now and they can stand on their own, well, if we all treated our children that way, then why did eighty-five percent of two thousand and eleven college graduates, which this is in the paper yesterday, move back home? We need to be there to help nurture an economic hard time, these things, these, the youth, and to bring them through. And all I got to say is if every child had Mr. Collins involved in their life, that they would be better adults for it. And when my child needs shoes.
You weigh over your time.
Okay, thank you.
Wrap that up. Thank you. Please, we're not, we're not, we're not clapping, okay? Out of respect for people who are here for different viewpoints, we're not clapping, okay? Thanks. Show some respect for each other. That was the end of the card.
That was it.
Questions or, uh?
Since it's, since it's getting really late, is it possible to do the rest of the budget since we have a, um, meeting on Tuesday, and then just go into the next section, the next section so that the council can, um, can comment, or?
Or maybe just suggest that we finish the public hearing because there might be some other people here that wanted to speak to other things in the budget.
I think, is that it?
No. That was on that one topic.
I mean, is that, can we do that since it's so late, because we have the budget meeting scheduled for Tuesday?
Madam Mayor, if the council's prerogative, you definitely want to close the public hearing because we want to start the time period between now and the adoption of the final budget and the tax levy. So you want to make sure you don't keep the public hearing open. But beyond that, moving on to the next item or however you want to do it is your prerogative.
And since it's late, how does the council feel about this closing the public hearing going on so that the council then can comment on the, on the contract?
Yeah. Um, frankly, I think it's early. I, I don't, I don't really think it's that late.
Well, we can, we could continue doing the budget, but I know, Ken, how long was you?
Did I finish making that statement?
Go ahead.
Uh, no disrespect, um, we've been working on this budget, the, the previous council has been working on this budget since December of two thousand and eleven. Council candidates, uh, have had the budget material basically during the same time period as, as I have as, as, as an implement. I think that this particular piece of the budget was, using the word emotional, was, um, kind of the hot button this evening. And I sense that we should be able to move, uh, throughout the rest of the presentation and then look at adopting the budget. Um, and if the council folks don't feel comfortable with what's been proposed, they certainly can make amendments. I mean, maybe we take a five-minute break and put some, you know, water on our face and so forth and so on. But I really, really would encourage us to, to move this thing forward. Uh, I have a sense that it's going to move a lot quicker than it has in the past, um, half hour or so. Um, those are my comments. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Anyone else? Close the public hearing and then discuss how we want to go from there.
All right. Uh, can we get a mo- um? Mayor?
Uh, Andrew, um, Mayor, Andrew, can we close the public hearing without hearing the, and doing full rest of the report, uh, Tom Kent?
Madam Mayor, the council member Vicki, and the, the staff reported in front of the public hearing for the benefit of the public, people here, the staff report prior to having comments. So it's certainly inappropriate to finish it, or the council can have it during the council consideration as well. It's, it's typically there just for convenience, so the public here will hear the entire presentation. But, uh, you know, it's, we're kind of out of order already anyway on this item. So getting it back in line, it could be closing out with, with Kent's report prior to moving past the public hearing. The only thing I want, the stress that we want the public hearing to close tonight so that statutory timeline continues.
All right, can I officially close the public hearing? All right, then we'll go on to number two, Consideration of Resolution Two Thousand Twelve Eleven Approving the Tentative Budget as the Final Budget for the Two Thousand Twelve Thirteen Fiscal Year Budget for the Town of Fountain Hills. Can we get a motion?
No move.
Second. So you had a second?
Right there.
Thank you. All right, and, uh, council discussion, um, I have a, a presentation that I had wanted to make as far as the, um, council discussion section. Um, you know, I heard a lot here from the theater, and it sounded like, I don't know where they got the idea that they want to close their theater, but, uh, I'm, I'm, my base of concern is with the tax and the tax money. And, um, I wanted to first talk about the building and what the building is worth. Um, regardless of whether we can sell a building or rent a building, uh, the important issue is what is the value of the building and, um, because it is something that belongs to the taxpayer. And so the value of the building should be considered, especially since the theater is the only organization that gets both a building with the maintenance repair, and we do a small insurance policy on it, and tax. There are other organizations that use public buildings, but they get no money. So I'd like to start by talking about the building itself. Um, I had some commercial real estate people do some work for me. Uh, the total square footage of the building is nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet, the two buildings. And, um, to simplify things, I just went off of nine thousand square feet, and I had someone run the comps, and I guess everybody knows what comps are. If you want to sell your house, you see what's comparable on the properties, uh, property that looks like yours, that's in the zoning and all. And, um, you can, you get comparisons to what was already sold. This is not what people ask for at prices, but what it sold. And, uh, the comps that we got were the lowest was that the building is worth seven hundred thousand dollars, and the highest would be nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that just says that if the theater had to go someplace else, then that is how much they would have to pay for a commercial structure of that size in Fountain Hills. Now, if they had to rent a structure, they had to rent a commercial building, uh, that size, nine thousand square feet. I got some higher estimates, but I'm going on something very conservative, which was one of the lower ones. It was seven and a half dollars a square foot, and that gives us six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars a month, or eighty-one thousand dollars a year. So we can see that the value of the building is there. And it should, as I know was discussed at the last meeting, only I was in the audience at the time, there is a value to the building. Building is owned by the taxpayers. Building could be given to the civic association to use for something else. It could be given to any group. It was given for the use of the theater, and, um, so that's, that's what the value is. The value is, if they had to rent it somewhere else, it would be eighty-one thousand dollars to rent something similar. Then we have maintenance and repair. I heard some numbers here about the maintenance and repair. I, I got the report from the town. And, um, maintenance and repair up to two thousand and eight was around twenty-five hundred, but then it was, uh, sixty-five hundred up to two thousand and twelve. So it's, it's over nine thousand in maintenance and repair. The only thing that really concerns me is that, uh, staff gave me a report that, uh, it looks, you know, it is an old building, and it looks like in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, we're probably looking at about eighty-six thousand dollars worth of repair on the building, roof and, and some other things. Eighty-six thousand dollars is, is quite a bit of money and considering, uh, also to, to give tax. We do an insurance policy. I know the theater carries another insurance policy. You know, so it's, it's only five hundred fifty-five dollars a year, but that, you know, that adds to the whole grand total of, um, like seven hundred and six thousand, sixty-seven dollars and forty-nine thousand. Um, and of course, they only pay, uh, one dollar a year, which is standard to what, um, other places pay, like the, the museum that uses the town facility. It's one dollar a year. Um, okay. Now, I had, I had these slides, and I just asked the staff just to put them in for me. It's not a staff presentation. It's mine, but I just asked them if they could put those in because I, you know, all, all of these, uh, service contracts that come to the town, uh, we've asked them to give us a scope of work as to if we give you seventy-three thousand dollars, what exactly are you going to do with the money? So what we got so far from them is, is just two pages. Uh, one page was saying that, um, that the money you give us is going to go towards production. And the other paper said, and your logo would be on, uh, some of the advertisement and you would be sponsors, uh, you would be sponsors of some of the shows. But there was, there were no specifics. Um, we look at the contracts for the other service groups to tell exactly where every penny is going. And I think some members of this council had demanded that in order to renew some of the contracts for some of the other groups, but they wanted real specifics as to where the money was going to go. So I can't see that from here, but I have, I can't, is that, could you just tell me which play that is? See, what happened last year is that we played, um, what we did was we un, un, were underwriting or subsidizing various plays and we did five children's plays and two adult plays. So is that, is that, Elgin is too many, thanks, I can't see it because it's sideways. So, yeah, I have it. When we look at this here, this just tells us where the money goes. And I, and I think we really need to know where the money goes. So if we look in the, in the column for actual, um, we take out the underwriting income and we see that this play brought in seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. However, I, I was quite surprised when I went down the column to the expenses and I noticed that there's quite a few salaries in there that I had, I had no idea. I, I assume that most organizations have office staff that they have to pay. But if you add up the salaries and the compensation for this particular play, that's seven thousand, two hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty cents. So you have a play that brings in seven thousand dollars and seven thousand dollars goes out in salary. And can I get the next one that is, um, two to go? Now, I can go through these, um, fairly quickly. I just wanted to explain the columns with the first one. So you can see that this one brought in nine thousand, two hundred and eighty nine dollars and fifty cents and twelve thousand dollars went out in salaries. So nine thousand came in and then they, 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 twelve thousand went out in salaries. And then we have the next one, which is, uh, called Chapter. Thank you, I appreciate you helping me, just flipping those for me. And that is, and that one actually only had an income of seventeen hundred dollars and fourteen cents and that's five thousand was paid out in salaries. And then we have the next one, which is Crazy For You, and that one brought in quite a bit more money, thirty one thousand, more than sixty eight dollars and twelve thousand went out in salaries. Jerry's Girls was a replacement for the main and I, I didn't have that one. I don't have anything complete on that one. And the last one is Legends In The Attic and that brought in, no, there's two more. Legends In The Attic brought in seven hundred and ninety nine dollars and two thousand dollars went out in salaries. And Beauty And The Beast, a thousand, five hundred and seventy nine dollars and twelve thousand dollars went out in salaries. So my point here is this, I, I, I don't have any scope of work for this year to go by. I don't know exactly where the money is going. So the only thing that I could do is look at last year, which is similar because the money is going into production. So I look at this and I see that a great deal of taxpayer money is going for salaries. And I question the use of taxpayer money for something like that. I, I had always assumed that the money was going for set decorations and buying costumes and I was quite surprised to see how much that half or even more was going actually out in salaries than was the, the production was, was actually bringing in. So that, that was two things that I wanted to present was the value of the building and then this is where our money is going. And, uh, let's see. As far as comparisons with some of the others, with some of the other, uh, organizations that use public buildings, I know the Kiwanis Building's been brought up several times. I think we have to remember that the Kiwanis originally owned the building and they gave it to the town, not the other way around. And the agreement was then that we would cover the maintenance if they gave us the building. As far as the museum goes, uh, yes, they do get maintenance and repair, um, but they don't get any sort of tax, tax money. So basically, uh, I was not in any way saying that I wanted to, I guess because I wanted to look at the value of the building, people misunderstood and thought that I wanted to do something by taking back the building. I had no thought in doing that at all. It was just a task because I feel that if all of the organizations that have buildings right now that are government buildings, buildings owned by the town, they don't get any money and this is the only organization that gets use of the building plus all the benefits with it, plus tax. And in just the last year, their amount of tax has been, uh, six hundred and ninety two thousand dollars for the eight years, plus the use of the building. And I, you know, I have some other things, but I'll open it up to the rest of the council to see anyone else wants to speak on it. Looking those ways, yeah? No one else? No one wants to comment on it?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I'm a fiscal conservative, I'm very big on a sustainable business model. Um, my whole campaign was run in the same way. Um, but when you come with, here's our situation, my first reaction is, well, let's get all the facts and I applaud you on getting in. Uh, I'm a commercial real estate developer, so I pulled up my membership to LoopNet just to check the comps and, and those are fairly accurate as far as what has told and what the going rate is. Granted, that's straight scale, I mean, um, so all those numbers mean. But the way I look at this is, uh, my next question was, do we have a policy, a procedure or a criteria as to how we give out money? All right, yes, we're giving out money and whether we should or shouldn't, that's definitely a discussion, but how do we do this? And unfortunately, or fortunately, right now, all we have is our general plan and our strategic plan and, and I'm looking at the stra- strategic plan right now and it's pretty black and white. Support quality, lifelong learning opportunities, cultural assets that enrich our lives. Partner with Fountain Hills Schools and other institutions to develop quality educational programming and opportunities. Uh, unfortunately, I, I almost feel like the horse is out of the barn. Um, for us to cut now, strictly speaking logically, is arbitrary. Just as it was arbitrary to start throwing out money. My, my wife is a Girl Scout leader, they're constantly fundraising. They steal all my clothes to sell at garage sales to raise money. So I, I appreciate the need, I, I work with several nonprofits. But I almost feel right here, right now, where we're at with this is this, this is a policy issue that moving forward, we need to, we as a council, probably at, at our retreat, need to come up with a set policy with a set criteria that dictates, at what level are we even going to consider giving? And then once we do consider giving, what's the criteria of that gift? Because right now, I, I, I'm looking at this and, and although all these things, uh, make sense and you can argue either side, it's arbitrary. Unfortunately, we started giving money out and it was arbitrary and so for us to cut now, it's arbitrary. So my, I hate to minimize it, but right now to get into the minutia of how are you spending your money, I would appreciate, you know, maybe a, a, a better budget when you do apply so that we can kind of see what is getting subsidized and I, I appreciate the work that the mayor has done on that. But I, I'm looking at this at face value and there's nothing here, um, that I can legitimately say we are not following the rules, we're not doing something right until we have a policy, a procedure with a criteria in place. Thank you.
Counselor, may I ask?
I agree with Cecil, um, in thinking about this, it really is a policy decision because the town has supported, um, community groups since we incorporated and the theater was one of the first groups that did come before the town. It started out being called special programs and they became community benefit programs. But there was always some, something in place that gave the town the ability to, to support the community and make it be the kind of community they wanted it to be. And since I had been on the council, the first year, we had a committee to look at the, the contracts and try and figure out, okay, are there other, other ways that we can fund them? You know, find dedicated funds that would be specific to these different areas. And it, it was difficult and we never really finished that discussion, which like Cecil was talking about right now. And each year, we seemed to come up against the same thing. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the whole program again, but then it doesn't happen and then it comes up with a budget time and then there we are, we're back up against the law. And you just, you just can't pull the rug out from under, you know, groups that you have partnered with for so long and say, this year, we're not going to do it anymore. You know, you at least have to, you know, provide some sort of notice that, you know, we're really going to study this and see where we're going as a community. And I think it needs, you know, even more than a, a retreat, I think this issue, because it is such a policy issue on how public funds are spent, deserves its own little, maybe mini-retreat. You know, to really get into the nitty gritty of it so that everybody can be comfortable if tax dollars are spent on these things. And the town isn't giving money away, we're buying the service. So it's not like we're saying, okay, we're going to donate to these nonprofits. We are telling them, we want something back for this. And when the community service program started, it was really directed towards youth. You know, what wasn't Parks and Rec doing? And that's when it came up with, okay, they were youth productions from the theater and the Boys And Girls Club, everything was geared towards the youth. Um, we might have kind of slipped away from that over the years and maybe we want to refocus back on that, but that would be done in the way the contracts are written up. And that certainly is our prerogative then to be very specific on how we want those dollars to be spent. Um, but I, I agree, this needs a lot more community discussion. It's obvious that there are people that feel strongly on both sides and that just begs the question that, you know, we, we want to really get into it and see where we want to go with the community. So for this year, I just, I think we need to, you know, kind of go with the recommendation with the caveat that it's going to have a lot more discussion as we go forward.
Counselor, may I ask?
Thank you. Well, first of all, before, um, I make remarks, I want to, uh, commend Val and the theater and the group, um, for all the wonderful things that you've done to the community and certainly for bringing everyone out here this evening to express their support for the theater. Clearly, um, you do some wonderful things over there. And I've been able to attend a couple of your plays, uh, with Annie and most recently the producers. Wonderful time. In fact, a gentleman by the name of Patrick Russo was up here shortly and during part of the production, I had him in my lap. So it was, it wasn't my choice, but he was there, he was there. So I became part of the show, you might say. Um, I first brought this up in the context of budget discussions. Now, I've been on the council for two years and I volunteered these past two years to serve on the budget committee. So I've become intimately aware, as I'm sure my fellow council members are, with the budget and the numbers and long-term looking at what are we going to do as a town? How are we going to pay for the things that we need to pay for? Now, when I brought up the discussion of the community service contracts, community service contracts were the theater, Boys And Girls Club and the food bank. And in no way whatsoever was I personally, or did I, my remarks to me targeting directly towards the theater. This was meant to be a thirty thousand foot discussion about philosophical differences that perhaps the council at that time, and we have two new council members now, philosophical differences about what the town should be funding and what it shouldn't be funding with tax dollars. I expressed my opinions about that and my opinions haven't changed from a week and a half ago with respect to what my beliefs are as far as what tax dollars should be used. Now, one of the things that's very important and council member, uh, Hutchinson communicated that is that, um, the council has a difficult time in, well, every year, what's most important is our budget. And the council has a difficult time balancing the budget, especially in economic times that we've had now. I make no inferences that by cutting the theater or the Boys And Girls Club or the food bank, uh, funding that we're going to somehow balance our budget. It's totaled a hundred and eighty two thousand and the grand scheme of things, it's a drop in the bucket, uh, with a thirty, thirty four, thirty one point five million dollar budget. So we're not going to balance the budget by doing those things. However, it's important, and I'm glad that there's so many people out here today and those watching at home, to understand where the town is financially and fiscally. Now, last year, you certainly heard that the town paid off Town Hall. Well, they had a little bit of more money than we anticipated and we moved some other monies around that we had in capital projects, I think it was capital projects, um, and we were able to pay off Town Hall. Now, that sends the message that, well, the town must be flush with money, it's paying off Town Hall. There's also discussions about monies that's going to be spent along Sawat- or, excuse me, the Avenue of the Fountain. Those are, there was a gentleman up here earlier that was talking about, um, dedicated funds. There's funds that are being used for the avenue that are dedicated funds that are not able to be used for other purposes. So the, the thing that I look at whenever I'm looking at the budget is how are we going to pay for the things that we need to have? It's the infrastructure, the roads and fire, police and safety. And at present, based on the numbers that we, we've had from staff, we haven't been maintaining our roads the way that we should have because of the fiscal downturn. And quite frankly, we're close to a million dollars, Ken, can you help me with that? Close to a million dollars in shortfall to maintain the roads in the manner in which they should be done. Now, we talked about having a road bond and that paying for it and a lot of communities do that and we all know what the results of the election were, um, with, with that. So we, as council members, and I personally view it this way, we've got to find out how we're going to balance the budget long-term and how we're going to take care of the things that we need to take care of. And we have to look at everything. You heard Mayor Slum before he left, we cut staff from eighty eight to fifty six, I think it is, fifty six full-time. Uh, our budget excluding public safety has been cut in half since two thousand and eight. So we really, that's the per- the perspective that I'm coming from as far as the, the town's concerned. There's nothing that these seven council members or any other council members can do to take away the theater. I mean, you guys are the heart and soul and, and many other people that are out there are the heart and soul of the theater and, and that's going to be there regardless of what our decision is. What, um, last year, we cut the three budgets, actually all four budgets, if you include the chamber, by twenty percent. And we, we dialed that back and those that may have been in attendance may recall that I said at the time, you know, these community service contracts need to be looking at whether or not we're going to have funding in the future for these things. So that was a comment that I made, and look at perhaps other funding. And, you know, the town, the town, the town is having a tough time fiscally. And, um, I think that when you, when you look, there's a, there's a chart in there and it's a flow chart for the town, for staff, you have the council and then you have the department heads and the lower level of, uh, reception and, and the guys that take care of the roads, Ken, Ken's guys and, I don't know if you have any gals out there, but we'll take guys and gals. Um, but above all of that, to you, all of you, because we answer to you, we answer the county council to you. Now, what, if you would like to take that and put that in the tax context, we're taking, we're receiving the money from you and then we're deciding where it goes. My preference would be to, at some point, be able to lower taxes as possible so that you are the ones making the decisions, not whomever it is up here as to what organizations you're supporting and what you can do. Now, I, I fully support even the theater, I don't want to close the theater and I certainly, um, wouldn't, wouldn't advocate selling the building or doing anything like that. But, um, you know, I'm not afraid to bring out things that we need to talk about and if we talk about this and we make the decision to continue with the funding or we reduce the funding or increase the funding, now at least we're out here discussing it and I think hopefully at some point we'll be able to put it to them. Thank you.
I think it's also important to, um, when we think about the taxpayers and the fact that they're basically footing the bill for all of this. Uh, on the one hand, you know, when we were giving the theater a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand and eight and nine, we were putting our primary property tax on the ballot. And, and in eleven twelve, uh, we were considering cutting our police because we didn't have enough money. We were going to cut one deep because we didn't have enough money. We were considering a telecommunications tax because we didn't have enough money. Meanwhile, we were still giving out seventy two thousand dollars. Now, it's, it's, the taxpayers are also looking at what we're doing and they're saying that how can you on the one hand say to me that now we need a tax and on the other hand, you can give my money away? and on the other hand, you can give my money away? Uh, we have an obligation to the taxpayer to use their money wisely. When they give us their money in their taxes, they expect us to pay for fire, police, to fix the roads, for emergency service, and for funds to run the government. You know, everybody, sometimes people say, you know, seventy-two thousand, it's not a lot of money. Seventy-two thousand is three part-time positions in our town. You know, our staff didn't get raises in a very long time, but look at the salaries that our taxes went to pay. At one time, at one time, the theater was probably more of a voluntary organization. Maybe they should look towards getting back to being more volunteers and not so much salary positions. I understand that there needs to be some sort of, uh, some sort of salary positions in offices, like, well, the museum, for instance, they have a part-time director, but they don't have anything else. They had one person working in the office, but then they couldn't afford that, so they had to let him go. So, you know, it's, it's very hard to say to the taxpayer, we are responsible people with your money. We will be responsible. But then we say, now we need to tax you because we don't have enough money. And it's not so much the point that this money covers something, though it does cover a lot. Seventy-two thousand does go a lot, seventy-two thousand can paint one of our buildings, our facilities are, they need painting, they need maintenance. We do maintenance on this building, we need to do maintenance on the other buildings too. And how can we, one of the arguments when the road bond went down was that the people said to us, we don't trust you with our money. And how can we win back the trust of the people of the town if they see that we are doing something with their money that they never told us we could do? So I think that it's important that we consider what our core services are. What is the function of government, what is our, what are our core services supposed to cover? And they are supposed to cover the basic services and keep this town government going. And I think our staff is cut to the bone, and when you think of eight years at nearly seven hundred thousand dollars, how many jobs in our town could we have saved for that amount of money? What we're doing right now is we're funding jobs for the community theater, but we, we're down to bare bones funding for our own town staff. And I'm sure the town staff would like a raise, I'm sure they would've liked a bigger one last year, and the year before, they didn't get one. This is what we have to look at, we have to look at the perception also of the taxpayer. Now, there's a lot of people that came here to speak, and a lot of people said, also came up and said, you know, you need to reach out to your three hundred people, a lot of them who don't live in Fountain Hills, and say, you know, you've gotta step up your support of us also. You gotta, the museum started a foundation a couple of years ago, the museum just started an endowment program. They did those things because they had to, because they weren't getting any money from the government. So they had to go out and do those things. Organizations go out and they do golf tournaments, they do all kinds of fundraisers, and they don't stop until they have enough revenue coming in to cover their expenses. And that's, and that's what a, what we expect of organizations, especially the fact that, and I tell, like I said before, the only reason why I, I was talking about the value of the building is because this is the only group that gets money and a building. They are the only ones who have ever gotten that. And there are a lot of groups out there that would like to have a building. You know, we have a rotary, and when they come to the community center, they have to pay rent to rent the room. Why aren't we renting them the room for a dollar? The rotary gave us a grass park. They do great things for our town, but yet they have to rent a room. All of the organizations in town, they wanna use the facilities, they have to rent them. They get a reduced rate, but they have to rent them. Why are certain groups privileged over others?
Anyone else have any comments?
I, I have a few, I'm not sure much-
Councilman Lade?
Yes, I, I, I have a few, and, um, I'll probably reserve ninety percent of them because we have a thirty-one million dollar budget to, to address and pass, so we have a budget operational on, on July first, which has just been on the corner. Um, I resent the notion that I am not being a good steward of taxpayers' dollars. Decisions that I make as a councilperson are not arbitrary. Decisions I make as a councilperson are driven by a community-driven strategic plan. It is the voice of the citizens that has told us what type of town they would like to be, and what type of amenities they would like to have. Now, maybe this conversation wouldn't even be occurring if we looked at the Parks and Rec budget, and we had a line item in there called theater. We wouldn't be having this discussion, because we're certainly not discussing all of the other things, recreational programs, that is currently in the recs budget. What if we call the Fountain Hill Community Tourism Program? For goodness sakes, there's probably as much tangible data indicating that tourists, this is a tourist attraction, yet we spent, and I haven't heard any objection from the chair, spending a hundred and three thousand dollars on tourism, which by the way, I support, because I think tourism is critical to a town. But if you were to look at that and engage in the same analysis, ninety-six thousand dollars is on salary. That's, I realize it's labor intensive. So there's really so much to say, and with respect to the buildings, we're talking apples and oranges here. We need to decide if this is a value-adding service to our community that can be done by a profit or nonprofit group more cost-effectively than the town can do. That's the side I come down on. And I believe that the citizens, and I'm not gonna go through, Councilman Yates already went through, specific strategic arrangements from the citizens of this town that have elected me, and by the way, I just went through a recall election, and I had a significant amount of support. And I never talked about political capital, but I think there's a true trust in terms of some of the decisions that I have made, and I, you know, there's probably no need to go there. You know, we're making this a lot more complex than it needs to be. Political ideology. I've heard this is not the role of the government. Well, here you go, I'm probably gonna be up for another recall. Who's to say funding these amenities for our town is not the role of the local government? We are not the federal government, we are not the state government, we are a municipal government, we are a town council that is a municipal corporation. How is a municipal corporation different than a corporation? In its mission. A private corporation is in it for profit. A municipal corporation is not in it for its profit. So I feel that this service, the Boys and Girls Club, other services that would normally be provided through, well, if it's a favor, put this in your budget next year, and we can, we can talk about it, because I think it would be a totally different discussion. Um, so I kinda operate not through political ideology. I know things are very popular now. And furthermore, we have adjusted community contracts by forty percent moving through this recession. We are now at a level where I feel that it's important to level off. If you cut more, it's gonna devalue the service. I'll, I'll, I'll cut things short. The role of the government to me is listen to my constituents. My constituents tell me to the strategic planning initiative, which is the most objective piece of information we have for me to use to plan a budget, and if you haven't been to a council retreat, the freeborn. However, we always start with a strategic plan, and we drill it down. And the types of services that we're talking about here with our community partners are amenities that our residents are asking for. Our mission statement, which tells me perhaps how to spend money, is the mayor and town council are charged with serving the best interest of the community for, for, for providing safety, well-being, respecting its special small character quality of life. These are quality of life issues. And one last comment. Last time we did a, a scientific survey by an objective outsider, not someone who had an interest in the town, eighty percent of the respondents said that they moved to the town because of, it's family-friendly, and because of it's a small-town character. These types of services define us, define us. And I personally think we are better, we are better than this. And we should work hard to do these types of things, because that's where the citizens are asking me to spend money, part of it, a small part of it, a small percentage of a thirty-one million dollar budget. I am a fiscal conservative. I am a fiscal conservative. Thank you.
We're not clapping, please, we're not clapping.
Mayor, uh, Mayor, if I may, just one, just a point of order here, because we do have a large budget. Um, and I, I respect, I respect your comments, and I respect your analysis, and I've gone through some of the same analysis myself. Um, I'd like to kinda just clarify where we're at in the process, and, um, we have a motion on the table and a second to adopt the budget. Um, I would suggest that someone puts the motion on the table to, to amend, if, if we wanna amend the budget, particularly on this item, um, which there seems to be opposition to, um, and then move on, and move on. Thank you.
Oh, Tom?
Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Hanson, did you wanna?
Oh, what, Dennis, Hannah?
Oh, Dennis, okay, I gotta look to my left, huh?
That happens. Uh, yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Hanson a hundred percent. I think that we're, we're almost a dead horse here, and I think we need to get this behind us, and I think we need to bring it up in a retreat, and I think we need to find a resolve. There will be a resolve that is a permanent resolve. And I agree a hundred percent with, uh, Councilman Hanson. I do want to talk about the building a little bit. In two thousand, I, you know, I'm gonna say two thousand one, two thousand two, I participated with Mike Archambeau, and we built the, um, the main stage out of the old original community center. And that community center was virtually ready to be condemned when we finally went in and started choring it up, and, and actually putting the fire protection system in, and building the stages, and, and doing everything that needed to be done. And I don't know if, if, if we didn't have somebody in the buildings actually maintaining the buildings currently, as, as most people know, if you don't live in a home, the home deteriorates much more rapidly than a home that you're living in. And the same thing with a commercial building, you go into the commercial buildings around town that aren't occupied, they're falling apart. And so, you know, we have to give the stairs some credit because they have maintained the buildings where at least they aren't falling down. And regardless as to whether they are in the buildings or not, if whomever told you that we had eighty-six thousand dollars of, of repairs coming up, we're gonna have those repairs whether they're there or not. So with that being said, you know, I, we, we get past all that, and then I will go back to the same thing that I addressed, uh, when we had the discussion last time, and that's the children, that's children and the economy. And as long as this economy is, is strapping the parents of this town toward they don't have the money to take the kids where they need to be, on a vacation, but we have the Boys and Girls Club, which can, we, it's a safe haven. We have a theater that's a safe haven. We've got some other school projects that are safe havens. But the theater, time and time and time again, gets to be the subject of conversation for the youth. And it was brought up, we have so little for our youth to do. So let's not, let's not, at this point in time, take anything else away from our youth.
Thank you. Hold on a second. No, all right. Um, what was I gonna say? Um, I appreciate all the comments we had tonight, because everybody brought up some really good points. And it reminds us that the, the theater is a part of economic development as well. You know, hearing about haircuts, and meals, and, and going to, you know, our different stores in town. It's just, it's a good reminder, we are, we are hitting the return on these dollars. Um, salary isn't a, a negative word, like Henry was saying, because, you know, your kids go to school, and you pay teachers to teach your kids. And it's the same thing with, with the theater. Um, you know, they're, they're learning a lot, and you can't, it's hard to do that with volunteers because generally, volunteers don't have the level of expertise of someone that you're, you're planning to do that. So I think if we just keep our eye on that we are able to show accountability to our residents, that they see that the dollars are, are, are purchasing a service, a very worthwhile service. I mean, that, that's our job, to, to show that we're spending the money wisely.
Uh, based on the comments, and based on the fact that it's nine, nine-thirty, um, in here three hours, and we're talking about the seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars of a thirty-one point five million dollar budget. Um, passionately, um, Mayor, I'd, I'd make a motion at this time to, uh, maintain the community service contracts, all four at the current levels that they are, um, listed as recommended by staff, contingent on the fact that Councilmember Hanson and Yates', uh, comments and requests that we have a discussion during one of our retreats, and, uh, delve down or dial down on these a little bit further. Second. I have the mic.
How about you, a second?
Point, yeah, point, point on, oh.
I'm gonna amend the motion to say that we will, um, reinstate the contracts, and the community theater can certainly continue to use the building, but we will not, but we will not supply the seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Would anyone like to second? Okay, it dies for a second, and we can have a vote on the first discussion?
Mayor, if I may, just, just a point of clarity. In that the funds at the current level as suggested by Councilman Elke are already in the budget, do we move the motion separately to approve? In that when we approve the motion, the budget, the budget will be approved with amendments, if amendments are made? Could you clarify that?
Um, no, Mayor, Mr. Vice-Man, I don't remember doing that. The, um, necessity, absolutely not, the, the main motion will cover it. Um, but it has been fairly regular during the budget process that individual items get a motion and a second and a vote, just so there's direction to the staff on where we're going before we come back to the final budget. So kind of a procedural necessity for staff to get direction so we can move to the next thing, rather than necessity.
Very good, thank you for your clarity. I'll second, uh, Councilman Elke's motion, then.
We'll, we'll, two seconds.
I'll clear it.
Is that, we just need a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
And we'll have a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Frank Marys?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Yeah, Capella?
No.
Two, five, one.
Very good.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, Ken indicated that he had some, uh, some new initiatives in his presentation, and since he was so nice to jump forward, because we had so many people that did want to share, that perhaps a way to, because I think this is a good tool for us to just kind of go through, and if there was anything that anybody wanted to bring up, as you said, we could do earlier, it might be a good way to go through. I am a little confused, though, because I know at the first meeting in May, um, I thought we had talked about a revised schedule up for, to adopt the budget, which included an additional meeting next week, the final approval, the, the second meeting in June. And I was getting the feeling that we were trying to move forward tonight, adopting the whole thing without that opportunity.
Now, we're, we're prepared, if you wanna do it on twenty, next Tuesday or the twenty-first, well, whatever the council wishes.
But I think it would just-
To give you more, give you more time.
It's a way for us to move forward, using your presentation, and then if there were any things that we wanted to bring up in your presentation.
Sure, 'cause I know that there's other questions regarding other programs that we've got, and we're, just for the saving of time, I don't know if you wanna go through those tonight, or you, go ahead, and we pick it up next Tuesday.
I can, I'll pick it up next, next Tuesday.
Does it do the same presentation?
I think that would be helpful, if we wanna, um-
I think that would be helpful if we want to, um, motion to continue till next Tuesday. Oh, sorry.
I'm not sure if it's point of order is the right term. My motion was to accept the community service contracts at the current funding level, which was all four. And I, in seeing Councilmember Dicky return, what that ultimately ended up doing is preventing her from having any discussion or input on the other three contracts. And I don't know if there's something that, you know, that's legal, I know she's here, but I, I didn't intend, though, in not giving you an opportunity to discuss those others here. I know you had lots of, because of the theater.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Elke, because those other contracts are part of the overall budget, you'll still be able to comment on them as we go through the budget process.
Good question, oh, Mayor. So, we had made a motion to approve the budget as presented, so what happens to that?
That motion is still on the table at the moment. Hasn't been acted upon.
All right, so we're here. Will we have a motion and a second on?
We don't think we have a second.
Do we have a second on continuing? Your, your motion was to continue till Tuesday. Do we have a second on continuing? Because we have one. And then, do you have any discussion on that? No? Then we, we need a roll call vote? Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Frank Mayor Lusden?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dicky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
And there's Kavanaugh. There's seven zero. So, can we now go on to the, the third one, since we didn't finish the budget, or?
Mayor Kavanaugh, I would recommend that that would be commensurate with after the adoption of the budget.
Table that off, folks.
Will you consider that?
All right, then the only thing left is a motion to adjourn.
Hold on. Madam Mayor, from a matter of procedure, don't we still have to vote on that?
We need a motion to continue on that.
I move to continue
Continue on the second.
Resolution twenty-twelve dash eighteen as well, till next Tuesday.
And a second from Councilwoman Hanson? And all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Now, we can get a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second? Second, Councilwoman Hanson, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn.